Mayor Parton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gore.
Here.
Counselor Joyner.
Here.
Counselor. Counselor Denton. She's here. Counselor Pelham. Counselor Holloway. I got Counselor Harris on the phone. Do you want me to count him as here? Because we're still trying to pull this computer up.
Yeah, is he on your cellphone right now?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Counselor Harris, I'm doing roll call. I'm just gonna call your name and you can just say here, okay? Okay, Counselor Harris?
Here.
Okay. At this time, is there a motion to allow Counselor Harris to participate remotely? I'll second it. Counselor Harris, at this time, can you state for the record where you're conducting the meeting from and the reason you're asking to participate remotely?
From home and for medical reasons.
Okay, at home for medical reasons? All right, is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway? Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, I will go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Manker and Mr. Branson for the work session.
Good afternoon, City Council, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Tonight, we have a budget work session for the city departments. We are kind of winding down here in our budget process. Tonight, we will discuss the.
Dr. Manker, can you speak into the mic?
Sorry. Tonight, we'll discuss the departmental budgets request in your book that we took a lot of time creating today. Okay, you have outside agencies. You also have in the back the requests from council as we go through this budget process. When council has questions that they would like staff to answer, we are kind of tracking that. And so in the very back of your book, you will see a tab that says council requests and then all of the questions that you have had thus far. We have answered those that we can answer to this time. Before we get started, I just want to also go over the budget calendar. After today, April the ninth, we will have the budget, proposed budget presentation. April the eleventh, that's when we will discuss the taxes, the outside agencies, and any additional housekeeping things that we need to do. The tax resolution has to be adopted on April the sixteenth. That's in efforts for Commission of Revenue and the Treasury Department to include those taxes into the system. And they have a deadline, which means council has to approve by a certain date. So the deadline is April the sixteenth for that. We'll have our first reading on May the fourteenth, and then we will ask council to adopt the budget, the approved budget, on May the twenty-eighth. So those are the outstanding items. As we begin the presentation, we will go in alphabetical order. The city clerk is first, and she will introduce the clerk's budget, including the council's budget. Each presenter only has ten minutes to present and five minutes for questions for sake of time. So I'm asking everyone to hold their questions until the end of the presentation.
To the very end?
No, to each department.
Do you mean circuit? I got circuit here first.
No, clerk courts, or excuse me, city clerk is first.
City clerk and then circuit court.
Okay, so I can go over the budget for city clerk. We're trying to pull it up so that you can have it on the screen, but we haven't been able to do that part of it yet. But I believe you all have a copy in your binders. Go ahead, do you have?
He said he don't have a copy.
I don't have a copy.
That's why I thought it was circuit.
Did you?
Yeah, same here. I don't have a copy.
Some people have it in there.
Okay, let's go with circuit clerk and we'll get copies made. Where's IT?
Is Mrs. Ward present?
So circuit clerk did not ask for any, for those who are not present today, that is because they do not have, they have not requested any increases in their budget from council. So it's just a review for you to look at.
Okay.
Okay, so city attorney?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and Madam City Manager. You have before you these budgets for the city attorney's office. I am not asking for any additional funds. If there are any questions available.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Smith?
With every department, if when they come up, if they don't have any request for an increase in budget, can you tell us also anything that you could eliminate? Or reduce?
Mr. Branson and I have already sat with every department to eliminate and reduce. This is the final version of what we could reduce it to. But if they're not presenting, they do not have any requests.
Okay, are there any other questions for Mrs. Smith? Okay, we'll move on to the city manager.
The city manager is requesting a total of four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. On page three, you will see the breakdown of those requests. A majority of those requests are located in management and consulting. Currently, there's ten thousand dollars, but there's requested three seventy-five, and this is for fiscal FY twenty-four audit prep and PMO services that the city agreed to two weeks ago with the Robert Bob Group. The second line is legislative services. The Robert Bob Group recommended that the city considers outsourcing legislative services to an outside agency. And so those costs estimate, they estimate around sixty-nine thousand dollars. The remaining of the budget, about twenty thousand dollars or so, are all related to conferences and trainings. And there are three conferences and trainings that I plan to attend throughout the next budget year.
Okay, Counselor Holloway?
I'm sorry.
What legislative services?
So between September and April of each year, this year, we contracted Herbert Bragg to provide those services. And so the Robert Bob Group suggests that we remove that title from the communications jobs, job duty, and to secure professional services to handle our legislative process.
Is that something that we should have considered as a council?
It's a consideration, yes. We're going through budget. We can talk about the items as we go.
Hold on, let's all keep, if you want to speak, let's just keep this orderly so that way I can see the lights.
So the, that's what I was about to say, so the suggestion from Robert Bob. How did it, how did it come about as a suggestion from the financial person to have legislation? Where does that come from?
I think he felt that, two things. One, when the Director of Communications and Government Relations individual had resigned, it was a conversation centered around that position and whether or not that position should have both of those functions combined. And we came to the conclusion that those are two different skill sets and that it was going to be very difficult to have that, find someone who is also have that government relations background. And so it was recommended to divide those two areas out, and instead of hiring someone, outsource those services. So that's how that decision came about, is how that recommendation came about. And the city has had legislative services in the past.
Okay, Vice Mayor Gore and then Counselor Pelham.
Okay, so I've talked to you about my position on legislative staff in the past. So I think the thing is, prior administrations had the position as one. The last administration, towards when Mr. Bragg retired, separated out and just only had communications, and we had a whole void for legislative. And so for years, we did not even submit legislative packets or anything like that to General Assembly to even lobby on behalf of the city. And so when you came on board and we had conversations saying, hey, this is a hole, this is a void we have to fill, you were able to get Mr. Bragg to come in and help us so that way we could have something on the books after years of not having anything on the books. But in those conversations, and I'm only speaking from Legislative Committee because I head for that group, I shared that I believe that this position really is a council position. In the past, I have had support from some members of council to see, why couldn't we have this report under council anyways? Because this is a legislative function, and if our job is policymakers, then it falls with us. But there was always a debate with the prior administration in terms of city employees and stuff like that, right? And then some members of council were questioning, do we even have the authority to have another person report to us because of the charter? It became a whole argument, and we never could get anything done with this. So in the past, we've had lobbyists hired, council voted to take away that contract. And so there's always this void that was there. I support having a person or either having from whatever way necessary, but I do think it's a council decision in regards to which way we go. And I do think that that person should fall under council, and I've always felt that way because of the function that we have. So I support this because we need to have it. The gaps that we have in regards to what we could be advocating for, people always like to compare us to other jurisdictions, Prince George, Chesapeake, and other places where people talk about stuff. But the reason why some jurisdictions have what they have is because they have lobbyists advocating for the General Assembly to make sure they have certain rights and privileges to be able to do certain things. Or either, for example, City of Pittsburgh, they have millions of dollars they keep getting from the governor's office and other state agencies because they have people lobbying for them to get money. Or either asking for the General Assembly to create laws or give them permissions to be able to do certain things. Hopo has had this philosophy that we don't need to entertain that type of stuff because council and the manager can do it all. And the reason why we keep being left behind other jurisdictions is because we don't think that way. To the point where NLC, VML, these other associations has been historically not allowed support from council to support those organizations. But then we turn around and say in our talking points, well, this jurisdiction has that, you know, they can do this, they have this. Well, it's because they're asking for it and they're fighting for it. That's why they have it. So if people want to keep Hopo the way it is and how it's always been, then they wouldn't support this. But they're trying to think about the future and what we can and should be, then this should be supported. But my only thing is, I think that whatever it is, if we have four votes now to do something about it, then it should be something that rests with council. So I definitely support funding this and then having a future conversation about what it looks like. But and I do stand by it being a council, but I support in the budget.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes, and full-time salaries in twenty, well, three sixty-nine, then it went up, and it went down to two twenty-nine. What was that? Was that Mr. Bragg's job?
I'm sorry, what page are you on?
No, it doesn't have a page. It's the last page in your presentation.
Okay, so the last page is the budget twenty-five entry from the original. And the first ten or so lines are Finance Department. We can't alter or change or add to that. So the discussion today from all departments are actually just the operational budget, which starts for me at Management Consulting Services to all the way down to the end.
What full-time salaries come into your?
So the full-time salaries that come through my, is the city manager's office is the manager, the executive assistant, and the assistant city manager.
And the savings for the assistant city manager, would those monies just go back to the general fund, I guess, at the end of the year?
Yes, ma'am.
And cell phone stipends, why is that so much? How many phones does that entail?
It looks like it is twenty-three, that was fourteen hundred. Twenty-four, there were, you know, there's no stipend. And then, so every employee receive a cellphone stipend. It's actually thirty, thirty dollars a month. And this is for, to allow employees to use their cellphone as a part of doing work instead of having a separate cellphone service. There's an app on our phone from my. Well, because a lot of people don't like giving out their personal cellphone for customers or citizens. And this eliminates having an actual cellphone and a cellphone bill.
But you said every employee.
Well, mostly the directors. I wouldn't say every employee.
But this is under your budget, it's four seventy-nine. How many phones does that entail?
That entail, well, this, I would say that this probably entails PIO, Assistant City Manager, manager, and the executive and the economic development employee as well. Because they do not have individual built-out budgets, and so a lot of their funds actually roll through the city manager's budget.
Okay, that's all I have right now.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the city manager? Okay, we're going to circle back to the city clerk for her budget and council's budget.
Okay, so for city clerk's budget, it's a total increase of twenty-one thousand for, the first line is for lodging because currently there's a zero dollar balance for lodging. And I'm going based off of the conference that was attended last year and how much lodging cost last year. And there's two conferences for the city clerks to attend, so that would basically be doubled what we'd have to pay for lodging to attend the conferences for training. So a thousand dollars is requested for lodging for the city clerk to attend conferences. There's currently a zero dollar budget for furniture, and I believe the furniture in the city clerk's office has not been replaced in a lot of years, and a lot of the furniture has fallen apart. The chairs are falling apart and the drawers are falling apart. So it was a request to have a budget put in for furniture for small replacements within the office that need to be done in order for the office to operate effectively. Because the current deputy clerk can't access most of her drawers because there's no handles. Advertisements, I think that me and the city manager discussed no longer doing the budget for advertisements for this coming year, but it's set to come up for the following year for the clerk's office to be responsible for all advertisements to be done for all directors out of the clerk's office instead of each director paying for their ads. But I think that's going to be obsolete right now, correct, Conceda?
At this moment, the current budget, they will continue to pay for their own ads. But future budgets will like to consolidate those costs, and the way we do that is we just take those ad monies that's already in the other departments and consolidate it under the clerk. But that's not how we envision it for this budget.
Okay, Counselor Gore, then Counselor Holloway, and then myself.
All right, are you finished with your presentation first? All right, going back to the advertisements, but so what is the need for that? Because that's changing the clerk's duties. And before we sign off on this, we council decide if that's good and we shift to her duties. In terms of the advertisements for everybody.
Well, it wasn't for me to do the ads. It's just for me to, when the invoice comes in, for me to put it under the clerk's code instead of the director having an ad budget.
What's the purpose of that?
Just to consolidate so she can keep up with it better. Because I think they're all just kind of coming to her, and then she's trying to figure out where they, which department it comes in at the end of the day. So for her just to have the management of it.
But why is she, why is the ads coming to her anyways? That's the part I don't understand.
Because the outside agencies just automatically submit them to her. That's just how.
I'm not talking about her posting the advertisement.
I know. When they respond or there's a receipt or invoice, they send them all to the clerk's office. And then she has to, you know, call around, whose ad is this? Did you post the ad? Where does it belong? And it's a lot, it's just a lot of time trying to understand which department the ads or the invoices belong to.
Right, okay, so this goes back to my question. Why is, why are they being sent to her? If a department is doing it, who are they communicating that to? Because, I mean, why is it, who was sending that to you? Because we didn't know this was the issue.
I think the way it was explained was that most directors were under the impression that before there were a lot of interim city clerks. When there was a permanent city clerk, the initial city clerk was already doing it. But because there were so many interim city clerks, they gave the responsibility to individual directors until there was a permanent clerk in place. And because, I guess now because there is a permanent clerk in place, the directors are wanting to go back to the original way that it was set up prior to the lap of no city clerk being in the office. That makes sense.
So our answer's still not addressed in terms of who sends you the invoice. Like where?
It's coming from.
She gets them, who sends them to you? That's what my question is.
The agencies, who the newspaper, the agencies where we place.
Yeah, the invoices are through the mail are coming to me. It's addressed to city clerk.
To the clerk.
And then once I open it, I have to read through the paperwork to see what the ad actually says to try to determine whose ad it is to figure out who's supposed to cover the fee for that.
Okay, so the department's the one who places the ad.
Correct.
With the news agency, and somehow the new agency sends it to you versus the person who placed the order. That's what I'm saying, that doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to clarify. That's what you're saying is happening? The department's placing the order with the news agency, and somehow the new agency, instead of going to who places the order.
The invoices are coming straight to me.
Okay.
So we'll have to talk about your work, your duties. That needs to still be a decision that council needs to decide on how to proceed with that part and how it might impact you or whatever.
How was it? Are you finished?
Okay, Counselor Holloway, then myself, and then Counselor Joyner.
I can pick it back off of what the vice mayor said because last year, we had already made the decision that the departments would handle that. So if something needs to change, then we will be totally changing her duties. I think that is a fault of the merchant. They need to correct who they're sending those invoices to. Because if they receive invoices from departments, that's a business. They're a business establishment. So they just need to make sure that those invoices go to the proper channel. We have already increased the clerk's duties, and then it just needs to be corrected. I don't think that added duties need to be established because the outside agency is incorrectly sending the invoices.
Okay. So if, my opinion is, with the advertisements, if it works and it's helping streamline things and, you know, all the department heads and the city manager are okay with it, you know, I have no problem supporting moving this over to the city clerk's office. The only question besides like that part that I have is for the furniture. And again, this isn't, you know, meant to like insult anyone's intelligence, but have you put any work order requests into Public Works to get handles and stuff?
We have.
Okay.
And we were told that we needed to just get new furniture because of how old the furniture is, they don't have the necessary replacements for the things that are breaking down in the office.
Have you guys tried talking with the school system? I know they have like surplus furniture. They rotate out like every, you know, like one or two years, they have a surplus. I don't think it's called like a fire sale or anything, but they get rid of some of their furniture, and that might, you know, be an option to look at. If they're, you know, good and they're functional.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, we didn't consider that. We just threw it out there for.
No, no, that's okay. I mean. Counselor Joyner?
I'm confused because I thought I heard the city manager say, well, we're not going to do it this year, but next year. And we're talking about, you know, something that's going to occur in a few months. So is this ten thousand dollars here? That's what it's going to cost to have all the departments run through?
Unless, did you, did you change, did you, because I know we had this conversation, Brittany. Did you want to do it this budget or next budget?
No, that's why I said this probably is just not going to be considered currently because ten thousand dollars is not going to, it's not going to be enough. For some of the departments, they're spending close to fifteen hundred dollars for two or three ads within a month. And so ten thousand is not an accurate number, and that was kind of a number that I was going based off increasing what my current ad budget is and increasing it to help other directors do their budget adding, but it's not, it's not efficient for the type of ads that they're sending. So.
What's the number, what's the real number? This isn't a real number.
It's, that's why I'm saying, it just needs to, it's something that we're going to have to go back and discuss for a future year because right now that number is just not going to be accurate. We don't know what the correct number would be that's going to be enough and efficient enough for all directors.
This conversation needs to be paused until the council decides how we want to proceed.
We can keep it at the same twenty-four-year budget.
Sixty-five, I think that would be, okay, I'm with you. All right.
All right, we got a lot of people to get through, so let's keep the discussions to ten minutes. The next budget is the city council budget. There's no changes. We did not suggest any changes to council budget.
Counselor Pelham?
What's service contracts for the city clerk? What's service contracts you have? And all the other departments too, if you would iterate that when you come up with the service contracts are. And all the other departments too, if you would iterate that when you come up with the service contracts are? Service contracts.
Ms, Ms. Pelham, I'm not sure if everybody's prepared for the break. I can email those to you separately. They, they were asked to present their increases tonight and why they had the increase in the sake of time, so we're not going line by line. There's twenty departments here. So I can, I can definitely send you tho- those service contracts for every department in a spreadsheet, but they have not been asked that and, and so the information would not be accurate because they'll be off the top of their head trying to.
Present their budgets, if you present your budget, that mean every line that's in the budget should be presented.
Well, every line in the budget does not increase.
Well, I didn't know you asked about the increase, okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor Gore and then Counselor Denton.
So, um, who is keeping track of what we need to circle back to? He's already got two points, legislative item and then this advertisements, who's tracking the circle back to these?
We are.
Okay, so, service contract, I mean, um, legislative position, advertisements, and I guess service contract request, I'll add another one to the clerk's office. Um, this is something else that we never closed out before your time, um, the recording of the video. Uh, there is no contract for that service. It is a gentleman's agreement that's been allowed to be here. Um, last time we tried to address it, it became contentious, political, et cetera, et cetera. But that will come out of your service contracts, that payment. So, um, we need to have the city attorney be involved and have closure with council as to what are we doing? Because now that we do council live, that is the recording. However, if something were to happen, some of the, I'm just playing devil's advocate from the arguments that were made before. If something happens, we won't have this recording, so council has to have a discussion about what we wanna do because we paid some, you know, and there's no contract. And so that needs to circle back, cause that will come out of your section. So make a note to say, um, the recording.
Okay.
Needs to be a discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, Counselor Denton?
Um, I just wanted, rather than going into all of this in detail tonight, this is of course not the final thing. Once we present and everybody gives us their pluses and manuses, then we'll do the, the budget. And if we feel what we've gotten cannot be sustainable, we do have an opportunity to come back, Mr. Branson, and you're gonna tell us, you can't do this. And we need to make some adjustments, right? I mean, this is kind of a wish list tonight, this, these are things we feel we need, but in the end result, we're gonna take what from you.
Uh, yeah, so we'll have to come back with, you know, with changes to make sure we have a balanced budget. And so what I've said, the goal is to say that whatever we're funding, whatever in the appropriation, we've identified revenue from that. And so that will be an ongoing process, not gonna go, get solved tonight. There's other things we're doing to, you know, behind scenes to make sure that happens and I'm in, you know, discussions with the city manager and others about that as well. We've talked specifically about capitals, right, in my presentation, so yes, that's right, that'll be, well, we're not looking for all of it to get solved tonight, but for you to know, you know, what's, what's being increased and one of the major th- um, things that are happening.
What's being increased and then we'll see, all right, thank you.
The, the, the budget, if I may add, the purpose for the presentations is for council to hear what the departments are asking for, to also give you an opportunity to prioritize what you would like to see as well, okay? So if there's something that you're championing, that you feel passionate about in one of the departments that you think it really needs to be done and you hear it in the presentation, that's your opportunity to, to have the input in the budget. So, you know, I would like to do away with the days of council not knowing what is happening in the departments far as their needs and their requests. All of the requests that you hear tonight cannot and will not be funded, but you have an idea of what the requests are and what they believe the needs are. So that's the purpose and the intent of this presentation tonight.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
Uh, Counselor Pelham?
Oh, yeah, and I, I'm not sure, but the, uh, school board used to have surplus when we had the fire. And, uh, with the new furniture, they, they gave away or sold or whatever, whatever they do, auction, that's the word, auctioned off or whatever, but she still, I guess she still can call or confirm it, but I know.
Just something just to check into.
Okay.
Yeah, I just think that, you know, if, if there's, you know, a possibility of some savings, you know, a phone call just won't hurt.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have a commission of revenue prepared tonight? No? Okay. Commission of revenue did not present any changes, moving on to the Commonwealth attorney, Mr. Rick Newman.
Counselor Holloway? I mean, I don't see a section in here for.
Requesting budget increases.
It's right on this side. No, keep going up, it's on a pink sheet like this.
Yeah, the, the com- commissioner of revenue would like to, I didn't know she is included that in there, but every year she is requesting for expansion of her office. Okay. She would like physical expansion of her office in some way, some shape, way, form, however we can possibly, um, have it where visitors can come in and, and they do not have to shift around the visitor. Um, one of her, um, concerns is that, uh, people in wheelchairs cannot come through the door. There's not enough space for a person that, that is handicapped to be at the desk and the, and the door at the same time. We've had, uh, Public Works to come over to try to give an assessment of, of how we think we can make some, um, changes in her office. Um, I, I think what you see here that's presented, uh, as a request is the cost that Public Works, um, came up with for, for materials. Um, they were gonna do most of the lobby work. I spoke with, um, Economic Development, Chris, um, I mean, I'm sorry, Charles, Charles, we, we decided that maybe we should look into changing the office, rearranging, putting, uh, real estate in the office where commission of revenue and changing it around so they can now have that window, uh, instead of actually doing construction to the space. So it's kinda ongoing to see how we can accommodate them and their spacing requirements. But she is asking for dollars for that and I don't think we've included that in our overall budget considerations. Uh, just, just because it's not the highest priority of things at this time.
Only thing that I have on, uh, commission of revenue is, does she have like a forecast of if the office is more accessible that we might be able to bring more people in for things like the DMV select that makes the city some money?
She did not present that.
Okay.
To me, she, her biggest con- concern is accessibility. And again, we, we thought that maybe the, um, real estate office was a better setup because of the window that's already there, it's right across from the treasurer's office. And actually the real estate does not receive a lot of customers and so it would be beneficial for both to, to switch offices. So that's something we're trying to study in the sense of where would the people go? Um, is it large enough to accommodate the real estate, I mean, the commission of revenue staff? Um, and as of right now, the real estate office is just down to one person, so, you know.
I'm just looking at from like a return on investment standpoint that if we're, unfortunately, people are leaving and, you know, they're turning away because they don't have time to utilize our DMV select, which we get a lot of great reviews on, um, especially in the region. Um, you know, I hate to turn a project away that you could end up, you know, making us money in the long term.
I can get back with you on that.
Okay.
Sorry.
Uh, Vice Mayor Gore?
Um, so just to be clear, Mr. Branson, this, these requests are not in our draft budget. They, they're not.
They are.
They are?
They are.
In the draft budget, okay. So we have a potential to recoup twenty-two thousand dollars if we don't support it, okay? Um, my other question is in regards to continuing education, I looked at the notes that was provided in here. Is it something about real estate training to potentially absorb the real estate office if necessary? Is that a conversation you guys have had?
No.
Okay, so this will open up the potential for commissioner's office to absorb real estate if necessary. So, so, do we need to fund the continuing education? I mean, uh, cause that's what the ask is for, so, um, that's another question, um, in regards to this request as well. So there might be twenty-four thousand dollars, um, that could be potentially up for grabs. Can you circle back?
I will, she's, she's not here today to talk about her requests.
And what other question, does the state provide, does not provide for the certification of the deputy?
Yeah, I'm confused.
That's local, they would have to do that to get her.
I don't have the answer for that for you, but I'll.
That question, do they provide any? Seems like they would do that.
Okay, are there any more questions on the commission of revenue? Okay, no, Mr. Newman?
Good evening. Uh, I'm only asking for approximately three thousand dollars.
Mr. Newman, can you speak into the mic?
And you can physically move it too, people don't realize they can take it, yeah.
I'm only asking for three thousand dollars and that's the only reason for that is there's an increase in the shredding fees that we utilize and there's been an increase in the, uh, station printer, uh, for service and that so forth. Really, the, the last page of my budget presentation, it shows last year's, uh, budget and comparable reimbursement and you can see there's only about a three thousand, not quite a three thousand dollar difference. Uh, as far as victim witness, they're not asking for anything else either, so.
Okay, uh, Counselor Pelham?
Yes, did anyone, may not know, but the city manager, did anyone ever look in, do y'all use the same shredding company? Where they pick up from courts, can pick up from city, pick up from all the agencies that we support?
We shred it at the city for all departments.
I think that's who we use.
And is it a separate contract, is what I'm saying, or is it a consolidated?
I, I don't think it's a contract, we just call them when we, we need them and they come get it and then they.
And it's out of your own budget.
It's out of who?
Your individual budget.
Really, and it, and it's not cheaper if the city contract with them?
We possibly could look into a contract.
Crazy sound like to me.
Says she can look into a potential contract.
I know, we asked last year, I thought. And I, I was just saying, if it could be saved, so if, if it's the same contract going to the same people. Y'all had individual contracts, we should be to consolidate, maybe save a few.
Well, I, I think they tried that several years ago when Ronnie was here.
Okay.
And I don't know what happened to it.
Yeah, I don't either.
Yeah, Ronnie did try, cause that's we got ones in city clerk's office.
Okay, well, we'll see what happened this time, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Y'all have a nice evening.
Thank you, you too. Okay, Communications and Government Affairs?
You're talking to the main agenda.
You made changes?
It's in our book.
It's in our packet?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and council members. Um, the communications department is asking for an increase of nine thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ten cents. Um, basically this increase is for, uh, service contracts, uh, and advertising and postage. Our advertising is increasing from ten thousand to twenty thousand because we'd like to do a one, uh, time publication to the citizens here in this, in the city. This would be a ten-page, uh, print, they would mainly focus on Christmas theme and the cost for that would be around eleven thousand dollars, that would include the postage as well. Um, we are also asking for travel and education and meals, uh, that was not in the budget last year, I guess because there was no one in the position, uh, that's, uh, we're asking for seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars. And then the dues and association memberships, we are asking for an increase of three thousand three hundred dollars. And this is basically for us to join associations so that we can keep up to date with the current, um, resources and the publications and the memberships that we are not in clubs at this time, any questions?
How did she come, how much?
Vice Mayor Gore and then Counselor Pelham?
How, how did you come up with just ten thousand dollars? Cause if I, I just wanna make sure I'm tracking correctly, okay? Uh, he said service contracts is an increase of fourteen thousand on the paper.
Yes, the, the ten thousand is what they had last year and so it's an increase.
This says increase ten, so if I'm, if I'm understanding what, I, I see it's saying an increase overall, just ten thousand dollars, but just this one ask alone is fourteen thousand dollar increase.
Are you talking about the service contracts, are you talking about the last page?
That was the wage summary.
Page, the wage summary, okay, so that's an increase of ten thousand, top of it. So what is the total increase ask?
The total increase for the budget?
Yes.
Nine thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ten cents.
Yeah, nine total increase.
Doesn't make any sense.
That's, so you're saying the total budget ask is nine thousand dollar increase? But on this chart, it says, for example, service contracts, the increase requested is fourteen thousand.
That's from, that's from last year, if you, if you calculate in, last year it was twenty-seven thousand. If you calculate all of what we're asking for, the request is for forty-one thousand. Forty-one thousand is the difference between the twenty-seven thousand, so that's an increase of fourteen thousand dollars.
Between last year and this year?
Yes.
So how can it be lower? Is that, am I asking, so, and am I, am I looking at this right?
It's not lower, it's not lower, we're asking for an increase for.
Of fourteen, so, so just for clarification, and again, I'm not, I'm fully natural, maybe if I'm looking at this, you want to correct me? If you're saying last year's budget was twenty-seven thousand, this upcoming one, you're requesting forty-one thousand, that's the increase of fourteen thousand, right?
Correct.
So that's a minimum fourteen right now that you're asking is an increase, so how can the overall budget increase just be nine?
Because there's other savings and other, so when you're, when you're looking, when you're looking at the budget as a whole, it includes salaries and everything else.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so there's decreases that have happened in other locations.
Okay, so all of her increases are on here and somehow it comes up to a net, just a net increase of nine thousand.
Right.
So this wage section at the bottom, this increase of ten thousand here, we don't need to pay attention to that.
That's just for wages and, that's just for wages.
But that's part of the budget, that's why I'm trying to clarify.
Where's the detail, is there a detail on this?
So that wage increase, Dr. Minker, is a, is included in her overall increase, right? Cause salaries is in the budget, so I'm just making sure that we're looking at two different increases.
So the finance, the current salary is nine th- ninety thousand three and three hundred. Okay, so twenty-five, finance department has put a hundred thousand, again, if you look at the top, that's the the area that we cannot touch. So here in her budget, it starts at cell phone stipend, okay?
I don't.
Do you have this detail?
No. No, we don't have this detail. I don't have this.
Right, so that, so I see it, so it's an increase of ten thousand.
And so health insurance done increased, the whole overall budget has decreased.
So my so my question is?
There were savings in this year because.
So the savings also adjust her wage increase?
Yes, savings also adjust.
Her wage increase, so it's just a net increase of nine thousand.
That's confusing.
This was left out of mine.
Just wanna make sure, I see Mr. Branson, I'm just trying to make sure we're following, it's just a net increase, right? Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I support your ideas, I just wanna make sure we're understanding what the numbers are. Uh, the booklet's awesome idea, love it, dope, uh, I think it's great, understand why you need to go travel, I get that. Associations, yeah, we're missing the same vote about legislative stuff follows with you, we're missing opportunity. So I support all of these, I just wanna make sure I understand the numbers.
Understood.
Okay, uh, Councilor Pellon, Denton, and then Holloway?
You first?
Yes.
Okay. On on the last page, it it seems, are you giving a raise to the communications person?
So the the two point five percent and and Mr. Branson can correct me if I'm wrong, is estimated in everybody's budget. It's already there.
Is it?
Yes.
It's a, yes.
So that's what the two for, the nine thousand represents the two and a half percent rate.
The ten thousand represents that.
Ten thousand represents the, uh, cost of living rate, whatever we gave you.
The ten thousand at the bottom that's separate.
But you said we weren't talking about salaries, so why is it on this sheet? If we only talk about increases in operations?
In your, so the department's prepared the operations part, which are the increases that they're asking for. But at the very end of their presentation, they provided you with the detailed budget. So you can see the overall line item for each department. The fi- the the part that they are unable to talk about is the finance piece. And the finance piece begins with their salary all the way down to the management. That is already been calculated for every person in their department. So those questions that you have that are salary related, that's a question for the finance department.
This this doesn't add up.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Councilor Denton and then Councilor Holloway?
Just very quickly, um, I know we talked about government relations and that's, we have, we're outsourcing that. So you are really really just doing communications?
Communications in the PIO position.
In what?
PIO, Public Information Officer.
Communication.
It's communication.
Yeah, saying another name.
All right, Councilor Holloway?
Vice Vice Mayor, you were asking a question earlier about the nine thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars, is that what you asked? And then that, I don't think that's correct, it says the current FY twenty-four total was sixty-eight, three nineteen. And the requested for twenty-five is seventy-seven, so that's the difference for the operating budget summary. But the then you were asking about the ten-three, that was totally separate, that's the wages.
Right, so I think it's correct, but so, yes. There's two things happening here. One, the increase for the nine thousand is because there's, in her operating budget, she had some deductions. Which was able to help her recoup to lower that number.
Right.
But the wage is still an increase in the budget, even though it's not counted with the operations money. Because it's assuming that we're gonna give a two point five percent COLA increase. So in in truth, the real budget increase for this department is nineteen thousand dollars.
Right.
Not just nine thousand dollars.
That's what I was about to make that point.
So it's, the operating increase is nine thousand. And that's why I was trying to get clarity on, cause I saw I was getting confused, but now we've talked around it, now I understand. So, um, but the true increase is nineteen thousand.
About nineteen thousand. That's what I was about to correct, okay, thank you.
In the city man, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, uh, Councilor Pellon?
How did, how is it you kept the salary at the same range and you wanted to take away the legislative part of the job?
So the new, so we do not have a PIO or communications person permanent.
PIO and communications, the same thing.
Right, we do not have a person in that position permanently at this time. This is ju- at the time that this budget was generated, that was the time, at the time of the salary of the last individual.
I know.
Okay, so it was just carried over. But going into the next year, once a person is hired, the the government relation piece has been dropped. And with the anticipation that council will move in the direction with having it, with it being outsourced. So that salary will reduce, that the offer for that position will decrease.
So fiscal year twenty-five, the salary should be decreased, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So why we have ninety thousand up there?
Well.
We should budget for less.
The finance team uses the current salary that's in the current budget year.
Make note of that then, okay, finance team, if you if you take away a person, uh, part, not talking about this individual, the position. That will be looked at, correct? You're not gonna give us a final budget with?
No.
Once we decide to separate it, we decide to separate.
Right, yes.
We, no, you can't decrease your salary.
That's why we have to close out the item of how we wanna do it.
We have to close out how, which direction you plan on going.
And then that will help to tell her kind of how she needs to move the salary.
Right, okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Holland? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brown, CSA?
Uh, Ms. Brown is not here tonight, Ms. Brown's dollars, let's see if she's. Ms. Brown's dollars actually come from the state. And she gave you the total of four point one million dollars. Um, which is a billback service for all the individuals that, um, are kids that she supports. So, um, she has not asked for any increase in operational funds, but she did provide you with the total of, um, uh, funds that she received from the state.
Okay, are there any questions?
Is there follow-up to or show that we get that money back from the state now?
Do you need us to show you that 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 it's been re-estateed?
I just need y'all to do it, I I do do, did someone check into?
Those doll- yes, ma'am, those dollars had been re, they started back in, um, early or, uh, late last year.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, uh, development and planning?
Good evening. It's kind of hard for me to see, but just some quick background. Um, my department of development is actually for for budgeting purposes is divided into four divisions. That's planning and zoning, uh, building code and property maintenance, geographic information systems, and the rental inspection program. In your packet, uh, I gave you a twenty twenty-four, um, year in review, quick summary, little infographic there, we're trying to toot our own horn about, um, we had, uh, actually, this number says a hundred and ninety-nine percent increase in citations for inoperable vehicles, it's actually higher than that. Anyway, just thought you might be interested in that information. Uh, in terms of our budget proposal for FY twenty twenty-five, total increase in that would be in, uh, including, um, the salary carryover that finance automatically input into the budget. Um, the total department requested increase would be one hundred and twenty-two thousand six sixty-seven thirty-one. But if you take out the salary information, just in in looking at operational increases, that number is thirty-seven thousand one fifty-nine ninety-two. And that, those are the ones that I was gonna go through tonight. Uh, first off, just, um, for staffing purposes, um, we are proposing to maintain level staffing for the department. The One Hope Well initiative was housed within the development department's budget. That is being transferred over, uh, and will be housed under the Healthy Families budget. So in the line item budget, you're gonna see for the fiscal year twenty-four, I just zeroed out One Hope Well's numbers just to make it. So it's apples to apples from twenty-four to twenty-five. A couple of quick explanations I won't go through, um, we are not asking for increases in part-time wages or management consulting. The reason I put this in here is because I know both of those items have been targeted in the past for cuts. But I did want to explain to you, um, what I have those line items targeted for in the FY twenty-five budget. Again, asking for level funding, no increase, but also requesting those to not be cut. So we'll start going through, um, the four divisions of the department. The planning division, we are asking for level funding with last year, so no, no, um, no increases. Uh, the GIS division, our service contract with Web Services, who provides all of our, um, GIS, um, cloud-based services that both our department uses, real estate department uses, their service contract goes up approximately every other year. This is that other year, uh, and it will be increasing fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, so, um, we also use that service contract line item to pay for building blocks in our annual service contract with that. The next division is, uh, building code and property maintenance. Included some information for you, uh, in there because the the main increase, uh, that we're asking overall in the budget and the largest increase is going to be twenty-five thousand dollars for what we call chapter eighteen violations. So that's the tall grass, trash and debris, uh, when we cite property owners for these violations and they don't voluntarily comply. We have to hire contractors to go actually, uh, cut the grass, pick up the trash, haul it away. Over the last few years, we have actually been spending upwards of seventy-five thousand dollars on those services, we're budgeted fifty thousand. And just for accurate budgeting purposes, I thought I'd just go ahead and ask for the amount that we actually spend. Again, we recoup approximately, uh, ninety-two percent of that money, so any, um, contractor that's hired to cut grass or pick up trash, we we do end up billing the property owner, they have thirty days to pay it. And under the new, um, standard operating procedure after thirty days, if it's not paid, it is applied as a lien against the property. And then when they come in to pay their property taxes, they have to satisfy those liens first, and then any payment they've made goes towards real estate. Uh, we also, um, again, I think the cell phone stipend, um, has been explained previous to me. But all of our, uh, inspectors, uh, that includes our one zoning inspector and our, um, our four building inspectors and our one rental inspector, they're they're all out in the field and they require, uh, phones. Or, so they are all, they currently were not all receiving the stipend, but now they are. So we have to increase the budget for that. Um, and then under mileage, I have an increase of seven thousand two hundred, that's because, um, our building official is on call twenty-four seven, uh, seven days a week. That, and the reason for that is if there's a fire or a car into a building, uh, and, um, EMS or first responders have a question as to whether that building is safe for anyone to occupy, the building official has to be called in to make that assessment. So he is provided normally with a city vehicle that he, uh, is able to take home, um, back and forth because of that, um, on-call requirement. We don't have a vehicle, a city vehicle for him at this time, so he is being paid, uh, based off a re, uh, mileage reimbursement. Uh, when his vehicle comes in, his new leased vehicle, then we'll just transfer that money over to the leased vehicle line item. And then lastly, um, each of our, or lastly for this division, yes. Uh, e- each of our building permits has a two percent state surcharge, uh, added to it, it's required by state law. Um, we discovered earlier this year that there was not a separate account where the that fee that is paid to the state was housed. And in fact, um, we believe that that, um, payment had not been made to the state as it properly should have. So, uh, the answer from the finance department was to go ahead and create a line item for that, uh, estimated annual payment. And that's what the twenty-five hundred dollars is for, that's technically approximately what we pay the state every year on the surcharge. Add all those together, that comes to thirty-seven one, if I can read this, one fifty-nine thirty-two, sorry, my eyesight's terrible. Uh, any questions?
Uh, Councilor Holloway?
Uh, somebody's presentation, there's a sheet, and I don't have, um, eagle eyes or owl eyes, what what is this?
That's just the in budget entire, in this entire.
Don't do that no more. What? Well, she just explained, well, can we make certain that we can see it? This is. This doesn't even make sense as to why you would do that, like I'm.
It was printed in the wrong format, this is what, this is what.
Yeah, no, I ain't blaming it on you.
No, I I get that, yeah, um, yeah, we can get that provided to you.
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor Gore?
So just, first of all, like, presentation's nice.
Yes.
I like at the bottom how you emphasize the two planners for eight boards.
I even highlighted it, did you see that?
For a thousand permes.
It's bolded and highlighted.
I like how you're making sure you put it at the top to make sure we only got one person doing all this work.
It's subtle like a brick through a window, isn't it?
Yeah, I like, I like it, um, I thought it was pretty smart. So, um, in addition to that, so, uh, in regards to your increase.
Yes.
So this twenty-eight thousand, the math maps, but this twenty thousand, this is because you don't have any other reductions in your budget. So this is like straight increase.
Yeah, so this, exactly.
Okay.
Yes.
Make sure.
Uh, and I did not go over our two CIP items, but which I can do that as well.
You should go over your CIP items as well.
Do you want me to do that now, or did you have questions about the operational budget?
You can go ahead on your CIP items.
Okay, uh, we had two, uh, CIP requests, um, these are the same two requests that the planning commission put forward as well. Um, the main, uh, and most important request would be, um, a request for funding to hire a consultant for our zoning ordinance update. You're CIP, I had, uh, I guess you're provided with the actual table, but the, um, estimated cost for that, is one hundred and thirty, it's in the back of the packet.
Thirty-two.
Yes, one thirty-two?
Over two years.
Over two years. Mr. Mayor, you had, you had asked for us to, for me to look into the budget and see if we could find some savings to put towards that. I looked at our, our pre-existing contract that we had with Berkeley Group to do the diagnostic. That's already been completed. We actually had $12,000 worth of savings there that we are proposing to put towards any future Berkeley contract for a, or future consultant contract for an ordinance update. So that would, that 12,000 is still here and is ready for that. The second CIP request is one that the department tends to ask for every year, and that's implement the city's wayfinding program.
Okay. Counselor Holling?
Last year, we had approved, I don't know how, how long it was for, but we approved, I think it was $100,000 for the wayfinding. Is that for the signs, right? You talking about downtown? What was that?
I recall us talking about it.
Yeah, and I think that was an ARPA funding request, but I don't recall it being funded.
I don't recall it being funded.
But we didn't ever fund it. Oh, okay. So, so if that's not funded, it scratched that this is a whole new thing?
It, it's the same program, the wayfinding program, yes, but without any, any other funding added to it. So this is, would be the straight up, in fact, this is quite a conservative cost estimate for a, I would say, slimmed down wayfinding implementation program.
I was, I was about to say, because if this the full year cost, it seemed like it slimmed down a lot because it seemed like it was going to be $100,000 last year. And then whoever was presenting said it was.
I tried to scale it back to make it a little bit more palatable for you all to accept. You know, a wayfinding program doesn't necessarily have to be an all or nothing. You can do it, it's best to do it all at once in the same manner. That's the, ultimately, the ideal way to do it. But it can be scaled back so that portions of it are implemented at different times, thereby keeping your costs down.
So question. What I understand about the wayfinding that Counselor John was explaining last year, how do we keep the cost to 208,000 over four years if things like signs and so forth could increase?
I'm not sure I follow.
If the materials increase.
If the, right, if the material cost increased like the following year.
Again, I'm just estimating, so I'm taking the total cost of what a program would cost today if we were to implement it today.
Got you. Okay.
And just trying to spread it out over a certain number of years. Again, from a budgeting standpoint, to make it so that you can fund it this year and future years. It allows you to fund more things each year. You just carry it over multiple years. It does not account for any potential cost increases in the future.
Thank you.
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
You made me think. All the, when is the spending for the department stopped April 1st?
No, the last day in April.
Okay.
So, so May 1, no more spending.
And so the, can you give us a next sales sheet of how much money will be returned to the general fund from each department this year?
Yes.
Okay. And that way, we can decide whether that money will go back to that department or be utilized in some other.
So, so unfortunately, those savings has already been captured. Remember back in November, when the Robert Bob group had indicated how we were going to pay for the services? It was with the savings. That's why spending was stopped, hiring, pausing on the hiring.
So they stopped spending since November?
Some, some other measures were put in place so we could capture those savings.
So they haven't spent anything since November?
No, departments continue to spend. We're saying no additional, meaning do not hire, okay, into your vacant positions. We're capturing all those savings to pay for the cost of the Robert Bob group. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Ward? Okay. Seeing no lights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. We're super excited at the Department of Economic Development and Tourism to present to you our budget request for this fiscal year 2025. I stepped into this role last February, and the budget for '24 was pretty much already set. And really, what I've been able to do this, this year over the last 13 months really is to, is to get a feel for, for what we need and zero in on priorities. Spend, spend a lot of time talking to you individually and then collectively, and then also meeting with the marketplace and the different groups that are related stakeholders in the city. So I'm going to present some requests for investment. This first slide shows some of the pictures of, of the past, Hopewell and its findings, and its founding, and then also this, kind of the same areas in, in present day. And I like to say that here in Hopewell, we've been a business destination since 1613. And we celebrate the past, but we invest in the future. So the, our mission statement continues as it has been to create this robust economy, attract investment, and increase the tax base. The focus areas of, as I've presented in the past, are pretty broad across healthcare, recreation, lifestyle, tourism, destination terms, some specifically manufacturing, retail customer staples, and then also the small business and emerging artisan community. There's one thing I, I want to mention, as we compare ourselves to other localities. You know, there's, it's only possible for, for me to be effective because of the partnerships that we have, the strong partnerships that we have here in the city. And while there are some of these partners that certainly give us more return on investment than others, there's, there's two over the last year that I really want to highlight that have been key and instrumental to me being effective in, in what I do. First and foremost, the Hopewell Downtown Partnership is a very critical person, a group. And we work together collaboratively, not just for downtown Hopewell, but actually across the city. And then also the, the Chamber of Commerce, the Hopewell Prince George Chamber of Commerce. So those are, those are really two important groups. And, and the staff in those groups actually act as extensions of my office in a lot, in a lot of ways. And so we work on collaborative things such as grants and, and things like that, marketing and advertising. So there's, there's really four main items that I need increases in my budget of investment in order to, to bring the most return to the city for, for my efforts. And the first line item in the budget that I want to talk about increasing is marketing and special events. We've got to tell our story. And one of the things that I've found more and more every day as I'm at VITA conferences, I'm at regional groups chamber, all these different things, is when I can get people to come to Hopewell, I can take them to City Point, I can take them around the industry areas, I can take them to the boathouse, and I hear the same thing over and over again. I had no idea this was here. I had no idea this was here. This is amazing. This is great. And so the thing is, is that we're not doing a good job of, of telling our story. And so the first line item in my budget that I want to, to increase is marketing and special events, but primarily focused on marketing. I'm actually asking not just for a straight up increase in this. I'm asking for a redirection of, of marketing funds that have been sent to a regional group to actually do more direct marketing from Hopewell directly. And, and so there's a $25,000 increase, but I intend to offset that in my request from taking money that has been sent to a, a regional group and instead keeping it in Hopewell. So that was the basis of my request there for that $25,000 increase. The, the second line item that I would like to see an increase in is really a, a new program that, that we brought in under tourism, working with recreation and parks. And that is the operation of the Hopewell ice rink. And I had a fantastic time operating the ice rink this past summer. Thank you so much for Recreation and Parks letting me utilize that asset downtown. As I reported in January, we saw over 1,000, over, close to 1,300 more people come downtown during the month of December than before. Meals tax went up, lodging tax went up. And we also brought in direct revenue from those ticket sales. We paid for the entire ice rink with just the direct ticket sales. We did that primarily because of the generous donation of the Bowman's to let us utilize the building free of charge, including all the electricity to bring the ice rink indoors. There's a, a really active prospect that is very close to signing a deal on that space, and we do not expect that space to be available. And so I, I, I will try my best to have a similar type of arrangement with maybe another building owner, or I may find myself renting a large tent or something like that. The families that came out to the ice rink said they really, really, really enjoyed it being out of the rain, out of the weather, so we could have more activities planned. And, and so I'm asking for an $18,000 increase there. I don't know, I haven't spoken to Director Martinez, if any of this comes from Recreation and Parks budget, if she sees a reduction in, in that line item. But I'm asking for an increase, and that's under the lease and rental equipment line of my budget. The third line of the budget I'm looking for an increase in is really just for, for our enterprise zone. And this, this line is, is basically, it's part of a economic rebate incentive program contract that was signed with one of our manufacturers for continuing investing a certain amount of money and maintaining a certain number of jobs. And so based on the amount of money they invest that year, and based on the amount of jobs that they have, they, they ask for this rebate, and there's a calculation that's in that performance agreement. And so this past year, in, in 2023, it was 260,000. This past year, it was 276,000. And so I straight lined that out, anticipating it to be that for this, this coming year. And so that's what that line item is there. So we're not, we're not directly buying or getting anything additional here. We're just reimbursing them for what's in their performance agreement for maintaining a certain number of jobs, and then also continuing a certain amount of investment in machinery and tools and things like that. The final line item in the budget that I'm asking for is legal services. And this is a, this is a big number on the face, the $30,000. We have got positioned right now, three pretty, pretty substantial, complex real estate transactions for city property for divestment, investment or redevelopment that we want to have third-party legal, basically consulting services on for people that specialize in the real estate transactions. And so I've put that in my budget. I will tell you that the transactions themselves, when they go through the sale of those transactions, will obviously offset the cost of the services, but I can't issue purchase orders for services if I don't have a line in the budget to do it. And so that's what this request here is. And I've basically allocated about 20,000 for one significant property, and then the other one about 10,000. I would request, for the sake of not compromising the city's negotiating position, that you don't ask me specific questions here about those deals. I'll be happy to discuss those in closed session with you, if, if you would like. And then I'm asking for an increase in my budget for taking over the operations of the Marina effective July 1st. And what I've proposed here is, is increasing the, the budget from 25,000 a year to $100,000 a year, but there's basically going to be a $75,000 increase in revenue, which is because the city's going to be directly receiving all of the, the fees associated with the operation of the Marina, instead of them going to a third party. Is, is, is the plan, this is what I'm asking for, the budget. So it's, it's a net zero offset, but it would be an increase in the, in the line on my budget. And then there will be obviously the revenue coming in from the, the slip fees directly. So that is a summary of, of my budget increase request for investment. And as, as we learned in basic economics, there's two ways to capitalize a company. One, you can do it with debt, or you can do it with equity. And so tonight, I'm asking for the, the injection of, of some funds for investment so we can continue to grow economic development here in the city of Hopewell.
Okay. Counselor Pelham, Gore, and then myself.
Yes, not about the projects themselves, but have you spoken with our attorney about the projects at all and the interface that she can make with them?
Yes. We have, we have, excuse me, we have been in discussion. And I have had assistance from our city attorney in, in the past on some preliminary things associated with these properties.
And, and so this is a specialized case that she won't be able to, to review?
So I.
On real estate? Okay, nevermind.
Yeah, I'll circle back to you. I got you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Gore?
So, Lee, Lee, council's guidance is all legal matters go to the city attorney. The city attorney decides if outside counsel is brought in. The city attorney's budget has money for outside counsel. So just city manager, Mr. Director Bennett, no one should be talking to any attorneys without going through city attorney first to get permission to do that. And, and then the money is granted through that budget. And if money is requested outside of what she has, she comes to council to get more money. That's how the procedure is, and that's what Ms. Powell was trying to touch on. That's, that's the procedure. So I can't support having $30,000 put into your budget for legal services because it goes to city attorney. Now, if you already know offhand that this is outside the scope, or she says it's outside the scope and we're going to need to do it, then I'm, I'm fine with supporting putting the money into the city attorney's budget for when that attorney comes to find outside counsel. So I'm not opposed to the need because not everybody's a subject matter expert on everything, right? But just as FY, legal services goes to the attorney, and it stays in that, in that budget. So if this is mostly just city manager, not to you. If council decides to support this, then that money needs to go over to the attorney's office.
So I, 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 I think the reason why this line item, and, and I can't be a whole hundred percent sure because finance enter in codes based on the activity of the department. And so because economic development deals with a lot of real estate, this line item, legal line item was placed there for them to be able to easily handle real estate transactions.
Well, then they see it titled correctly. It just says legal services. And I get what you're saying. And I think even your remarks, I heard you say attorneys. So based on what was said and what's written, this is a legal matter. It goes to city attorney's office.
So if I could, if I could speak, in this past year, in, in fiscal year 2024, on matters that required this type of, of legal counsel, I consulted with the city attorney. We discussed bringing in specially, specialized counsel. And then I was instructed that it had to come out of my budget, so I was pulling it from service contract.
So, so, so here's an opportunity to make adjustments and to fix, because everybody's new here, right? So you have a new city attorney, new city manager, new director. Prior council guidance, we consolidated all of that into the attorney's budget to avoid issues where we were not made aware of contracts, right? Case in point, which you talked to us in the back about. So we constantly had issues with contracts being signed, and we not know about them. And, and there was a lot of economic development contracts in particular that were not being cleared through council. So there, we consolidated all that under the attorney. And for the attorney to say, hey, I need outside counsel, and to have that discretion, and to give a pot of money for the attorney, so they didn't even have to run it past us every time. It's, they use their discretion, but if they need it more, then just come to us and ask for more. So that's why I'm saying, if this is already understood clearly, that it's a need, just put the money over there. And, but, so you have your pot of money still over there. I'm just saying it doesn't fall in your budget. And just to make sure that all other departments know, they still run stuff like that through legal until legal says, hey, let me give you another person to deal with, right? Case in point, HR office. They do that a lot with the law firm in Richmond, it comes to HR matters. It's the same concept. So I'm not opposed to it, but back to some other points. The, the special events, council has that in our strategic plan that we had adopted. We're talking about our strategic plan now, of course. We did have an ask for you guys to look at bringing back her. We did have an ask for you guys to look at bringing back Hooray for Hopewell in a different form. Is there any update that we will have, not right now, but in the forthcoming future, about what that looks like? Because especially, we're going to have requests to help support these things. We kind of need to know kind of what you're thinking about, so we can say like, hey, you want to allocate money towards this. Is there any time soon, Dr. Baker, we'll get an idea on what type of events the department's thinking about hosting?
So I would say on April the nineteenth, when we look at our budget holistically, there may be some discussion about things we want to host, and then things we may have to dial back.
Okay. So it's coming.
There's just not a lot of funding for a lot of extracurriculum activities at this moment in time.
Both ends coming.
But we can plan.
We have, we have been meeting regularly and planning an event that would be considered a citywide event, that would be similar, not named the same as what you just mentioned, the Hooray for Hopewell. But there has been meetings between chamber, the city staff, including myself, and people from planning, and the Hopewell Downtown Partnership as this group, and we've included at all public events and advertising, we sent direct mailers to people to basically say, what would you like in the event? So we're gathering all that together. We have an outline for it, and we want to come present it to counsel. We've penciled in September sixth and seventh as a two-day event in our calendars, but we'll be ready to present that to counsel here very soon, for y'all to hear kind of-
And just support or not, because the directive was to see how we can bring it back. So we have to give the directive to move forward, right?
Yeah.
And then also what the other ideas for the budget, and because my ask was to, I've asked for this last year, and I asked for the year before, not to fund PART anymore. So is that the third-party group that you're talking about? Is that in our outside agency stuffs? I didn't see it listed. So is it PART that you're taking the twenty-five thousand?
Yes.
It's, you can say it. It's okay. I mean-
So, yes, we had been part of a regional group that identifies as PART, and I was asking for that money to be directed in.
I support it. I maintain readjust anyway, so that's, I mean, so it's long overdue. That's why we need a tourism position. And it's okay to have these conversations, that we're having budget conversations, partners know we're talking about what we're going to do, just like they're talking about what they're going to do with us. So it's okay to say we're talking about PART in the money, because I'm going to ask for outside agencies for that to be pulled this year anyways. So I'm glad it's in your budget. I support that wholeheartedly, and I think that when you come back with us, it was helpful to see your vision, because there's other monies out there regarding tourism that we also should consider pulling back or adjusting. So to know what you're thinking about for events, it's helpful to know, should we also ship other things to support your budget more? So that's what I'm saying, in the near future, we need to have a picture of what that looks like, so that way we can say like, hey, maybe we should give them ten thousand extra dollars or whatever, because I would much rather know now what your thoughts are versus halfway through next year, and be like, oh dang, I wish we could do this. And well, I thought about it, but I didn't tell, this is what we need to know, right? So, and in terms of the ice rink, that money's been deducted from Parks and Recreation already?
I have not had the conversation with the director. I just basically put it here as an increase on mine. I don't know if the director of Recreation and Parks had it as a separate line item, I'm not sure. We have not had the conversation.
Director Martinez? Yes, ma'am. This, is this twenty K, was that in your budget?
No.
Because I thought it was all brought together with volunteer work and stuff, right?
Correct, yes, ma'am. So we do not have it in our budget to decrease it, just because of the additional things that we have added to the system, which is why we were grateful that Charles was able to facilitate that this year with the volunteers and the group and the savings. I'm sorry, I'm short. Yeah, okay, so, so really, I got you, thank you. So really, Mr. Bennett, in your budget, the twenty-five thousand, if we support this, is pretty much a wash. The eighteen thousand is a new money request, because it's not coming from her department. The sixteen thousand is a new money request. The thirty thousand will be new money, but moved over to the attorney if we do it, and then the seventy-five is new money. So then you're saying your net difference-
Seventy-five is a wash.
Is a wash, that's right, you said the thing. So really, the only new money is eighteen, sixteen, and thirty?
Yep.
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Bennett, one question that I have for you is, do you plan on trying to complete the connection of the Riverwalk over to the Marina this fiscal year coming up?
So the Marina Walk, the Riverwalk to the Marina is under Recreation and Parks and Public Works. I'm a champion for it, and I help, and as tourism, I drive people to it, but it is Recreation and Parks and Public Works together.
All right, I'll just, I will table that one till they come up. So be prepared.
FYI.
The second one is, since you're taking over, you know, the operations down there at the Marina, do you have any money budgeted, or thought of any money budgeted for dredging down there?
So I had a public meeting with the slipholders that was advertised at the beginning of March, March fourth, actually, to hear from the slipholders on things that, and not just slipholders, anyone that utilized the Marina. We advertised it, people came, we had about twenty people that came to the meeting, and I asked them for feedback on things that would be like high priority, medium, and going down. And so I asked specifically about the dredging, and so everybody that attended the meeting said that it was not a priority to dredge the safety of the Marina boardwalk and other areas on Marina. The safety was the main priorities, and I asked about, well, isn't it silted in and low, and can your boats not get in and out? And they said that there's not a problem with the boats. There are certain times of day that the kayaks can't launch from there at low tide. So I don't plan right now to have any dredging done. Right now, this money and this budget is for immediate, urgent safety improvements. That's the idea.
Okay. I knew the kayak part was pretty bad, but I just didn't know how the boat section was. Counselor Holloway, and then Counselor Pelham.
Vice Mayor addressed the issues that I-
Thank you.
Was it about the attorney stuff?
Yeah, the attorney and the attorney issue and the other ones.
Okay. Counselor Pelham?
Yeah, what type of equipment do you have to repair? On your last page, and you have repair maintenance supplies, is that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Is there a particular line item that you can-
Yeah, the one that says equipment requests two thousand, and then repair maintenance supplies a hundred and fifty thousand. Am I seeing it? These numbers are little.
So if you're looking at object five zero six zero zero seven, repair and maintenance supplies?
Yes.
So it sounds like that Excel that you're looking at, if it says a hundred and fifty thousand, it sounds like that was an older version before Finance had me update this on February twenty-sixth. Finance had me update this to make it a zero increase. And so I originally had asked for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which would have been a seventy-five thousand dollar increase for the Marina, because the amount of urgent repairs that are needed there. But a majority of that is timber, fasteners, and decking.
So that's for the Marina upcoming?
So that object, that whole budget there is a separate budget for the Marina. Everything that's in that organization.
Okay. I couldn't get out economic development, I forgot about the Marina.
Sure, sure.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else for me?
Vice Mayor Gore?
Just Director Martinez, you can come up to, I'm sorry. So just, I know we had our conversation with closed session with counsel regarding some economic development stuff, but just to point a clarification, the Marina has always been with Parks and Recreation, so are we, is manager saying we're shifting that to you now exclusively?
Yes.
Yes, and it's interconnected with the economic development along the waterfront as an area of focus, or riverfront district. And so we met with the city manager and Recreation and Parks and myself, and I volunteered to take that on.
Okay. So the reason why I'm asking this question, and Martinez can answer this, when we last was talking about the status of some of the things that need to be repaired, this is when Reed Miller was on his way out, and we had asked for estimates on how much it would cost to replace some of the items that need to be done down there, because counsel had to vote to take immediate action to tear down one of the- El Doc. Yes. And then you guys were supposed to give us quotes on the other ones, and then we knew there's been a lot of money. So where does that stand with this whole transition between the two departments? Like, what is going on with that part? Because we were told it was a whole liability conversation, et cetera, et cetera, and I haven't heard you mention anything like that, so I'm trying to figure, where does that fall now?
Great question. So originally, when we had requested the funding to remove the roofs, it was funded, but then it was defunded in the following opportunity, a council came together, when a new council came together. So in this process of transitioning this to economic development, it's more so for, to remove me as the middle person in regards to leasing, so that way when Charles is working on the development piece of things, there's not me in the middle of it. So he can control the entire process, and eventually, the goal is to then revert it back to it. But while he's doing his planning in regards to the direction that city council had given him, he wanted to make sure that he had full access to the entire project. Does that answer your question?
No, it doesn't. So, because we didn't give any direction about anything, we were giving ideas.
That was the agreement, that when I came and presented the first time as a director, the actual project, it got voted down, and then the conversation was-
The Marina grant that council had approved to do the repairs that I'm talking about was approved, then new council came on board, and the decision was reversed, and now we don't have the funding to do the repairs. So now, back to my question is, so I get the whole leasing conversation, but who, so who is managing that part? Because that's not a part of the whole leasing conversation.
It is.
It is.
You guys are putting that with that, so it's going to fall on Charles now.
Correct.
Okay, to take care of that whole thing.
The money from the slip, we had that conversation Tuesday, money from the slip will go into repairing.
Yeah, I heard the conversation Tuesday, but that money is nowhere near touching what we were told that estimates were to replace those things. We were told those are millions of dollars. So I'm confused about what, that's not the same thing.
So here is the deal. So we are managing this in three ways. We are eliminating slips that are not leasable for safety reasons. So as of a couple of days ago, Director Martinez and I came together and actually agreed with the building official downstairs that three slips needed to be vacated immediately, and those slips were vacated immediately. We're also looking at other ones, and so there's multiple things happening down there. There are things that are in good condition, there are things that are in okay condition and can be maintained and made safe, and there are things that are not. As we look to the future, the future is to be presented, to be determined immediately. We have to basically make it safe and continue operations in a positive manner for the city, and that's what we're doing. The way we're doing that, the way we're financing is about changing the structure of how the place has been leased. So we recognize the money's not here. I would love for you to give me a lot of money to do a lot of things, but we're going to have to do it differently. The Marina has to pay for the Marina.
Right, and I understand, and I've always, I've said it for years, I'm glad that someone else said it from a staff perspective, besides Ms. Martinez. So I think you understand my question, because when we last left off, it was a bigger scope, millions of dollars. I get where you came from, but that wasn't really a part of the conversation? So if I'm understanding correctly, you guys have eliminated the issue areas by not addressing those now, by focusing on the safe areas of Marina, and that's a part of what Charles is going to oversee, correct?
Correct, and then use the money to hopefully fix, yes, exactly, so that we can get those operational again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing no lights. Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Thank you.
Moving on to Finance, Mr. Branson?
Hi, good evening. So Finance, I'd start with the basic financial offices of accounting and procurement. We have asked for some additional money for training. Most of that is in accounting, and I think, just given what we have, we can hopefully all agree that their ongoing training is important, and a lot of this will be to connect them more into Virginia Government Finance Officers Association. So there's trainings, and there's also connections that can be made if there's things that you want to do. The total of that is fifteen thousand five hundred between those two departments. The good news is, the assessor, before the old assessor left, she put in this budget, she has a request in for three hundred thousand dollars for an outside contractor to do the biennial reassessment. Since then, I've been working to find an interim replacement for her, which I have found someone, and hopefully will be on in the next few weeks. In talking with him last night, he said that he will be able to, with, if we, there's some staff, vacant staff that are funded that we'll hire, he'll be able to do that assessment in-house. And so we will, I'm going to take away the three hundred thousand dollars, so that's going to be cut out of the budget. And I figured that out last night, so it's good timing from that standpoint, but-
Probably the best news we're going to get all night.
It probably is, so.
Transfer to them.
There you go. So that would leave, and there's some reductions in travel, which actually, and training, which I may add back in, but so to make probably a net increase of fifteen thousand five for the training in accounting and procurement.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Branson?
Yeah.
Counselor Pelham?
What kind of training procurement officers, how many officers do we?
There are two procurement officers, yeah, and this would be for, there's an annual meeting of Virginia procurement officers. They haven't gone to, and it's, you know, that's the time again, very valuable to meet other officers, to find out what's going on. They do educational courses and things like that, so.
A hundred and thirty about?
No, fifteen hundred dollars. No, no, this is, oh, I'm sorry, this is the procurement, the cost of the procurement office is going at fifteen hundred dollars. That increase, that fifteen hundred dollar increase, I'm sorry, so that's the entire budget current requested. It's a fifteen hundred dollar increase across all of procurement. That fifth, that increase specifically is for going to a conference for procurement officers. Not the entire, no, that's, that's a great question. That's a great question. No, that, yeah, just the increase, not the whole, that's the entire budget for procurement.
Going to Paris, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
A couple times.
Yeah, a couple times. And same thing with accounting. The fourteen thousand increase is for training. That's what that increase is for. All the rest of the costs, you know, there's a lot of costs in accounting for contracts and munis and those kinds of things, and this, but this is the entire budget as well.
Did you say the two ninety-three is a new increase? Yeah.
Oh, the two ninety-three, yeah. That was, that included a three hundred thousand dollar increase for an outside contractor for biennial reassessment. We will now be doing that in-house, so that is being, that was an increase. And you've had that in the past, like every two years it's come up, but the assessor who we have is someone who has been working as an assessor for the last forty years, and recently retired, comes highly recommended, I've had a couple opportunities to talk with him. So, and he's like, no, we can get this done in-house.
So this, so the two ninety-three, this is really savings?
That's, no, the two ninety-three, I found this out last night, so that's not reflected. That's going to go down to zero in terms of an increase. Well, we will not have an increase in the assessment office.
Okay, so it's just the fifteen thousand.
Yes, I was coming in asking for nearly three hundred thousand for the assessment office, it's going to zero. I encourage my fellow department heads to do the same.
It's a hard act of y'all.
Charles keep most though.
Thank you, Mr. Branson. Fire Chief Rupert?
What was that?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, appreciate the opportunity to come and present-
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, appreciate the opportunity to come and present, uh, the fire department's, uh, budget tonight. Like to start with, I think, I think you all know what we do, but, um, obviously we, we fight fires, um, but we also provide all of the EMS, uh, for the city. Uh, we also provide emergency management, uh, as well as, uh, uh, fire prevention through the Fire Marshal's Office. So, um, we do, we do more than just put out fires, but, um, that's what we enjoy doing the most, most of the time. Uh, so I wanted to start with a couple of things when it comes to just, um, uh, what I'm not asking for. I think it's important, uh, I know in the past you have, uh, you know, explained or, or, or talked to us about not understanding, uh, what maybe some of our needs are, um, that we haven't requested. I'm very cognizant of, uh, the, the financial, uh, constraints that the city has, and so therefore I have been, tried to be extremely conservative in what I've requested. However, I don't wanna go without saying what it is that our department truly needs. Um, we talked about this last year, uh, our minimum staffing on a daily basis is thirteen, uh, the national standard for a single house fire is sixteen. Uh, for that fire that you just saw, uh, you, there should be twenty-eight firemen on scene, uh, for the fire that you just saw that we put out. Um, we did request assistance from, uh, Fort Greg Adams, uh, that night, uh, for personnel. However, our personnel put that fire out within, within minutes, um, so they did an excellent job. Um, but we did have to require, you know, we did require, uh, assistance, uh, just because of the time for overhauling all that and having those extra people. Um, so what, what I had planned on requesting this year was six additional positions. Um, that would allow us to fully staff our, uh, currently our, our quint, or our ladder is cross-staffed with a, an ambulance. So if an ambulance call comes in, the quint sits in the station, if we have a fire like you just saw, the quint's gonna be sitting in the station, it's not gonna go out. Um, same thing with the brand-new ladder truck that we hope to have, uh, next year. Uh, it would not leave the station, uh, if they were out on an EMS call, same thing, if it was out on a call and we got that third EMS call, then we would not have an ambulance to send out, so that's, those six positions would allow us to staff both of those apparatus, uh, twenty-four hours a day. Um, that would, would have been my request this year, uh, the total for the cost of those people as well as their, uh, uh, benefits would be four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Um, and there is a safer grant out there that, uh, will fund, partially fund those positions for three years. Uh, it starts at a higher level percentage, and then it goes down over the course of three years to allow the city to kinda ease into the cost of, of those positions. Uh, we have gotten positions in the past through that safer grant. So that was the plan, however, uh, based on our, our current financial, uh, restraints, um, I did not request any of those this year. Um, also, just a reminder, I know all of you probably know this, but, uh, we have one station that's a hundred years old. Uh, in twenty twenty-six, it will be a hundred years old, we have one that's, uh, will be about seventy-five-year-old, seventy-five years old in, in about twenty, um, this coming year. Um, so, uh, obviously I know we have a lot to do as far as cavers and things before we can address that, but, um, just so that you're aware, we do have a lot of, uh, expenses related to these old buildings, and we'll get into a little bit of that in just a minute. Um, also our apparatus needs, we, we continue to struggle to keep apparatus, uh, in service and, and on the road. Obviously, as you know, there's nothing that we can do without a vehicle, uh, we can't put out fires, we can't pick up, pick up sick people without working vehicles, and so it's always a struggle with us. Um, uh, one of those is a, a re-chassis of an, an, an older ambulance. A new ambulance now costs over four hundred thousand dollars, that's what we, we had paid for an engine when I came here, now we're paying that for an ambulance. Uh, so we are looking at a re-chassis, which would take the current box and put it on a new chassis, that's still gonna come in around two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Again, something I didn't ask for, but something that we are gonna certainly need, uh, in the, in the near future. We're also gonna be looking at, uh, the need for, uh, two new engines, our engines are coming to the end of their service life as well. So over the next couple of years, we'll be asking for funding, uh, to replace them as well. Uh, what I am asking for as far as capital, I kinda put this a little backwards here, but our, my one capital request this year is for a replacement of our boat. Um, this boat was purchased, uh, through a lease agreement that was arranged through the, the fir- prior fire chief, as well as the prior assistant city manager with a local vendor. Um, it was a custom-built, uh, uh, boat, and, um, it is literally falling apart, we have seams, uh, welds coming apart. Uh, because it's a custom-made, uh, product, no one wants to work on it, we can't get anybody to repair it. We've even talked to people down towards the beach, there's no one that we can find that wants to touch it or mess with it, and so for emergency response, it's basically out of service. Um, and, uh, so we are looking at a replacement of this, of this vessel. Um, uh, the total cost there is three hundred and thirty-two thousand, we replied for a grant last year to purchase equipment, the equipment for the grant. Actually, we had put in for the, for the entire, uh, boat to be replaced through the grant, and then they changed the rules on us. Uh, we were not allowed to request the boat, but we could ask for the equipment for the boat, so we put in for that, we did get that, that's eighty thousand dollars towards all the equipment, leaving us with two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. Uh, we can do that, I got a quote from our, our lease, uh, uh, the, the group that we use for leasing the, the ladder truck. Um, so we could lease that, uh, product, uh, over the course of seven years at forty-four thousand, uh, three oh two a year. So that would be my, uh, request would be for forty-four thousand this year, but that would be a, a reoccurring acqu- request for the next seven years to pay for that. Um, my operational requests, uh, total a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, uh, approximately. Um, a couple of things there, and, and some of this you'll see is, is kind of a net zero. Uh, the first one there is, uh, ser- fire service contracts, uh, there's two things there, one is just our, uh, uh, the, the purchase of D, uh, powered DMS software. This is a product that the police department uses to, uh, house all of their SOPs and SOGs. Um, we are moving, we have moved to that product as well. Um, this will allow us, it's gonna help us to, uh, make sure that we have everything clean and neat for all of our staff to be able to easily locate all of our, uh, SOPs and SOGs and keep them up to date, as well as help us with accreditation later on. Um, I've also asked for ten thousand dollars for mental health services. Again, this is something the police department has to, um, provide for their, uh, folks. We also, uh, have folks that suffer with PTSD and things like that, we'd like to be able to provide them with, uh, mental health services. Um, also under repair and maintenance, I've asked for a twenty thousand dollar increase for replacing our, uh, uh, air exchange cleaning systems at both stations, this is a V I O S, uh, compliance issue. Uh, these things have been out of service for about thirteen years, we talked about this last year, I got money in the budget. And then, uh, July first, we lost, uh, two HVACs, one at Station One and one at Station Two, which basically ate up the money that we had planned on using for replacement of the system. So I'm back again asking for this money, um, and as I said, with the older, with the older stations, these kinda things come up, uh, pretty regularly. Under EMS service contracts, the sixty, this sixty, the majority of this, the sixty thousand dollars is something that is basically a net zero. Uh, we have a contractor that, that bills out all of our EMS. Um, in the past, they have taken their five percent, and the, the way that contract works, they take five percent off the top, uh, that's their fee for services. Um, in the past, they had taken that off the top before sending us the money. Um, you know, uh, we decided that probably wasn't the best way to, to do that, because it's the fox guarding the hen house, so to speak. So now all the money is sent directly to the city, we have people that, that, that go through and check and make sure that we're receiving all the money that we're supposed to receive, and then we send them their, they bill us for that five percent. Um, that money's never been put in the budget, so what happens is, over time, is I'm constantly sending, uh, the city manager a request for when we get a bill, to take that money from the EMS revenue and increase our budget in order to pay that invoice. Um, so the, the, uh, the conversation this year with the city manager was, let's go ahead and put that money in the budget, so there's not a constant request going to her every time we get a five percent bill. If we go over the sixty thousand, which is, is possible depending on what our revenue is, uh, we may still have to do some of that. Um, but, uh, for now, we'd just like to get a placeholder there, so we can go ahead and pay those invoices as they come in. Uh, finally, in EMS, in EMS medical equipment, I've asked for eighty thousand dollars, this is a pretty unique situation. Uh, for over thirty years, uh, we have used, uh, regional drug boxes that have been exchanged at the hospital, this is basically a free program. So all the drugs that we use on the ambulance, when we use them, we go to the hospital, we exchange that drug box at whatever hospital we go to, we get a new one back. Well, the, uh, the FDA and the DEA have changed their regulations, um, and they're, what, they are now gonna, they've decided to start enforcing those um, on November, uh, twenty-fourth, I think I had November first in there, but either way, um, November twenty-fourth, um, they, we will no longer be able to do that. So we're gonna have to purchase all of our own drugs, we're gonna basically have to become our own pharmacy, um, in, in the fire department. Um, and it's a statewide thing, everybody is struggling with this. So this budget, uh, this eighty thousand dollar request is to purchase equipment, um, to, to be able to dispense the drugs appropriately, to track, uh, those drugs, to make sure that, um, we're, we're keeping account for all those, cause obviously we're gonna be inspected and, and, and all that, as well as just purchase the drugs. So just as a, as a, as an ide- for an idea, we've, we, we typically will spend over seven thousand dollars a year just on, uh, Narcan, um, uh, as, as, as an example. Um, so we, we could, and a lot of that is, some of that we carry outside the drug box, so we, we currently are, you know, burdening, we have some of that. But inside that drug box obviously is, is free to us right now, and the hospital bills to the patient, um, but all that's gonna go away, and we're gonna have to take the, the full burden of that. Finally, hose and, uh, radio repair was a, was an object code that, uh, back when Gems was, uh, moved into munis. It somehow got into, uh, a capital account, and it's been a reoccurring thing. Last year, uh, it got cut, I think inadvertently, uh, it was twelve thousand five hundred dollars that pays for, uh, hose replacement and radio, radio repair and replacement. Um, and, uh, so we had to find that this year, as far as trying to take from other lines to pay for any repairs that we've had. Um, and we'd like that, to get that restored this, this, uh, this budget. Any questions?
Uh, Vice Mayor Gore and then myself.
Um, just as a reminder to the C manager, um, to please send the contract out for the boat on the sea terrain, so that council can see it, the old one. Um, I have a few questions, for the software that you're talking about, what your SOPs, if I understood it correctly, is SOPs, right? Why, what is special about that software that the SOPs can't be uploaded, like the internet site the city has?
So, there's a couple of things, first of all, it, it tracks all of the changes, so it keeps, it keeps copies of all of the old, um, SOPs and SOGs, um, and so you can see all of the old versions as you go back, so that we can see historically where we've been and, and where we're going. Um, it also allows us to, uh, when we have a new one, we actually send it out to all the em- employees, and they have to actually basically read it and sign off that they have read it and understand it. Um, so it tracks that everybody has seen, seen each of these, uh, policies and procedures, and that they, um, uh, acknowledge that they've seen it and, and, and understand it. Um, and so, what, and what I should say, I think I put it in there, this was, this should be an eight thousand dollar investment. Um, but talking to the vendor, I told him there's no way I can pay eight thousand dollars for this, um, and so they went back and looked at, well, you know, we can talk, we can actually piggyback off what police has and, and brought it down to about twenty, uh, I think it was, can't remember.
It's like two thousand and some change, but I'm still thinking about the functionality, right? So, um, so it's more like a document management system as well, and like a training part. But I've questioned C manager, is this not something that can be used citywide, especially if we're talking about the Robert Bob group doing training with all of our SOPs, is it not look like something that would be helpful for every department to kinda have? If you're talking about having older versions of SOPs, having people check off and sign, they read them. I think with some of the issues that we're talking about with overall SOPs, we're, uh, that would be a system that would be good for not just your department or policing, for everybody, HR in particular, I think this would be really good for them too.
Training requirements.
Yeah, like it just makes sense, like for not just.
So I haven't spoken with, um, the Bob group on the actual software they plan on using for the SOPs, but police and Kim is in the building, I, I think if I'm not mistaken, this is designed especially for police and fire. So, eh, you know, he is just.
Uh, we use it to, uh, address our accreditation, so our policies are put in place. With our state accreditation, we have to show proofs, so the system's designed for public safety regarding accreditation processes. The best part about it is that you can actually add your policy procedures into it. When we update our policies and procedures and things like that, um, we can.
So is it something specific to public safety, or is it helpful for public safety? Cause the reason why I'm asking is, is because it sounds like a, just a, a really nice software, that'd be good to track SOPs and who's reading them. So is it for public safety, or is it a really nice software? Cause if it is, it should be citywide, cause I think it's really cool, so I'm trying to figure out. I think you should still look at, thank you, I appreciate it. But I still think this is a good thing for, you circle back with HR, um, about, it's kinda doing the same things, we'll definitely need that with Robert Bob group, if they train everyone, because I don't know if the HR modules, the munis that we're talking about, I just feel like this is a great opportunity, so I'll just move on from there. But, um, in terms of Department of Medical Services or Emergency Services for Virginia, you know what I'm talking about. They have this whole issue with them losing three hundred, was it thirty million dollars that they have lost? So, you know, states worry about hopeful's money, they should work at their own state agency, but, um, thirty million dollars has been lost. And I heard about like, uh, some is impacting advanced life support, some other credentialings that they should do. Does that impact your, your department right now in terms of how they support you guys?
So, so I, that's one of the things that's in there, and I kinda glazed over it, cause I was trying to keep my ten minutes. Um, Hand Heavy is a software that, that the state had actually contracted to pay for, for us. Um, and what that does is that gives the, uh, all of the medics access to all of our policies and procedures for EMS, their state-specific policies and procedures on their phone. Um, it also gives them a lot of, uh, guidance on pediatric and, and, and adult dosing of medications and all those kinda things. So we actually spent some money to customize that, to, to have all of our stuff in there. Um, as a result of, of this debacle, um, they decided to just cut funding in the middle of the year, um, which leaves us with, I think it was a four thousand dollar deficit. Um, we had already invested money into customizing this, and we'd actually purchased equipment that matched the software. We had, we had really leaned into this, cause it was, it was an excellent product. Um, and now, that's one of the, my request, is that, that, that four thousand dollars we're, we're gonna be billed for. Um, we were able to get them to balance bill us for the rest of the year and, and steal that from some other place to pay for the rest of this fiscal year. But come July one, we're gonna have to pay for it for, for the next fiscal year, um, and so that's what, that, that's part of that.
And what about the ambulance certification, I heard it do something with, there's some other certification that they do with fire in particular that you guys might be hit with having to take on, is that the only one that you know of?
Well, so, a lot of the things that have affected us, one of the other things that has affected us is, uh, grants for, so, for instance, we graduated five paramedics last year, um, a majority, you know, we, a majority of that was paid for through, through a grant. Each of those gentlemen applied for a grant through Office of EMS and was able to reimburse the city for a majority of the cost. So I think it was about five thousand out of the seven thousand dollars that costs is specific for the class piece. Um, we're putting six more, six more providers into class this year, and that grant's no longer available. So now, we're, we're actually, we've been blessed with the fact that we had money from the closing of the, uh, the rescue, the, uh, um, Hope Well Emergency Crew, when they closed, they took the balance of the money they had and they gave it to us, part of that request was that we use it for training. And so we have some money this year for a stopgap from them to be able to pay for that. Um, and we hope that that's gonna kinda get us across this, this, uh, thing where they can figure all this money out and get back to a normal budget where they can start offering those grants again.
So you're hoping July one is gonna, the money's gonna be back, but you're not.
So we have the money in the account, where they're starting class here in the next month, um, so we should be good for, for, you know, this class going in, and this, this class is gonna be a year, so it'll be, it'll be in twenty twenty-five, and we'll be looking at doing this again. Um, and so we hope that they will have fixed that problem, and, and we'll be back to looking at grants. So there, there's a lot of little things like that, I mean, they're not little, but there's a lot of things like that, that yes, has definitely affected us.
Okay, I have last two, um, in terms of mental health, I think it's, so, I think it's great, but I have a question. Don't we have like with our employee, um, program, that then, so do they not, that they offer mental health? So what is the difference between this and what, eh, what we have through our insurance?
So, the struggle, and, and this is a struggle across police and fire across the country right now, um, we, we try to use reach. And I think you were, you're talking about reach. Um, we, we try to use reach, um, and they're not prepared for what.
You guys deal with?
What we, they just, they, they're not, they're very ill-prepared for what our folks deal with. Um, you know, when you go and talk to those people and they start crying.
Okay, it's a problem.
So, so yeah, you, you really need people that are trained and prepared to deal with the type of issues that police and fire deal with as far as PTSD and things like that, and so that's, that's why we, we've attempted to use that in the past, it's been a train wreck, I won't go into those details. So that's why we're looking outside of that for, for a resource specifically for our folks.
Last question, you have on your sixty thousand or something for EMS position, count, I'm just gonna make sure I'm tracking this correct, not the EMS, like the billing person. Council created a position for that purpose, and I've been asking for the, the revenue from that position for a while. Um, is this, is this, is this what you're asking about, billing contract, what billing contract? We had a, we created a whole position for this.
Right, so that, actually the money in that position is gone, so we, that money's not there anymore. We went, so that, so we went through four people in a matter of like three years. Um, we had very terrible success, and that was prior to me, I mean, I was here, but I wasn't responsible for it at the time. Um, we had very bad success with an in-house, uh, 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 biller. So we, we went back to what we were doing before that, which was we outsourced the billing. Um, and what we do is we pay for a part-time person that comes in and does all the reconciliations. So, uh, you know, we have somebody that works. So uh, you know, we have somebody that works uh full-time in another locality doing this as a job, they come in, you know, about once a week. And they do all the reconciliations to make sure, back like what I was saying, rather than uh the the billing company taking that five percent off the top. Everything comes to the city, we deposit it in the account and then we reconcile that with all the bills to make sure that we're getting everything that we're, that's that's due the city. Then they bill us for that five percent. Um, so that, so that line is, you know, the money for that position is gone, it it's not there anymore. Um, that was taken away, I think, uh, I know at least, I know it wasn't there last year and I don't think it was, possibly not there the year before, so. Um, so we only have a a part-time person that comes in just once a week to do reconciliations, everything else is is outsourced through a biller.
Yeah, can we get that information? Cause again, I've been asking for that, uh, how much money has been collected, how much are we um delinquent? What is going on? So it'd be nice to know the contract and the actual, what you're saying, like what what has happened since you, not you, but the department switched over.
So for instance, this year thus far, um, I I just um was talking to see manager, I think, I think, and I can't give you the exact number, we'll get you the exact number. Was a little over seven hundred thousand dollars so far this year that we've brought in 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 EMS bills.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, I got one question, um, and this is one that you probably want, that you won't have an answer for tonight, but something to go back and look at. Um, we just got a presentation from uh Jimmy Sanderson with uh Davenport Investments. And they were showing us um different mechanisms um and types of funding that we can do uh for big capital projects like the fire station. Um, and I know that it's not in your capital request this year, but you know, looking forward, um, I would like to see something that shows how possible avenues which we could finance. Um, the new fire station.
So, so one thing that I'll um, so I mentioned since you asked, um, I mentioned it before, uh, which was a a penny sales tax. Um, and and so this year, and so I was moving forward that until the the legislature this year decided to undertake a study on on funding fire, fire departments. Um, I knew typically with the way it works, you send a request up there and they're saying, oh, we're studying that, so you know, usually that's a no, no, no go. So I've kinda tabled that, I was hoping to to come next year pending the outcome of the study. The study basically fell flat, they decided not to do anything with it, the legislate, the state legislature did. However, what they did do, a couple localities had come forward asking for a penny tax to fund uh s- public school uh facilities. Um, they decided to do that across the board, I I certainly wish I had known about that before they passed it, cause I think it would have been an easy uh request for our our legislators. To have them put an amendment in there allowing that for public safety. Um, and because that's something that's been done across a number of other states. Um, I I have um talked to our regional chiefs organization actually today. Um, and that's a request that I've made to them, it's something that we can look at requesting from the legislature going forward. That we look at an amendment that would allow that penny tax to be implemented, not just for school infrastructure, but also for public safety infrastructure. So um, I think that would be a great opportunity, not only for us to find the the fire stations in the short term, but also in the long, over the long term. Things like police cars and fire trucks, which are very expensive, we could set up a a an apparatus replacement budget. Um, that based on that revenue coming in, you wouldn't have us coming forward asking for a ladder truck or they wouldn't come be coming forward asking for ten police cars. Because we could set up a budget that would be, that would be covered by that penny tax and and would take care of it. And that would be something that wouldn't have to be part of the budget discussion every year. So that's the way I would like to see that addressed going forward, at least one idea for that, but certainly we can look at other options as well as far as um funding that, as far as capital.
Okay, uh, Council Palam and then Council Holloway.
On your land item, you have conventions and conferences, twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yes, ma'am, and that, and that's, and that's, that's, that's not, that's not at all accurate. Again, this is one of those things that um as as part of the um, the way the budget's restructured, that's all basically training. We send, in fact, this year, I went to one day of one conference, uh, down in Virginia Beach, I didn't even spend the night. Um, and that's the entirety of conventions and conferences within this entire year. Uh, no one else from our department has gone to a convention or a conference. Uh, actually, I think that's actually a bad thing, but we're, we've been extremely busy with a lot of other stuff, so it hasn't happened. That money is training, essentially, um, so. Ma'am?
It should be down here with the.
Yes, ma'am.
Fourteen thousand dollars in training, so training with total thirty-nine thousand.
Yes, ma'am, I would agree.
And that's mandated by the state and federal for your positions as far as.
Um, so, no, so actually, when it comes to certifications um within the fire department, it's the uh jurisdiction having authority that that sets what those are. So so essentially, as the fire chief, I set what what that training requirement is. However, we try to follow the 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 national standard or the 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 standard that most people have around the state. Um, and so, yes, we are, most of that money is all spent on sending our folks to everything from pump operator training. To uh, you know, mayday firefighter down, to any number of classes. Um, and so, uh, no, that, we we don't spend twenty-five thousand dollars sending people to conferences, I can tell you that.
So you gonna change that?
Yes, ma'am, we can, we can certainly do that.
I mean, if you don't, if you don't take that much for this a regular conference, just put it under training where it belongs. And can you tell me again, have you, do we need the, have you um hired the EMS people? So the fire trucks don't have to go out every time the ambulance go out, or is that a state requirement? I never could understand why a big fire truck comes out to pick me up.
Yes, ma'am, so that depends on the call, so for instance, um, you know, anytime we have a uh unconscious, unresponsive call. Um, that, you know, again, that could be somebody in cardiac arrest. Um, you know, two people in an ambulance is not gonna be able to handle a cardiac arrest on their own. Um, it's gonna require a team of people. Um, so based on the the call type, that's why we have both go out. Um, we don't send a a a fire truck out to every, every EMS call. Um, you probably heard one go out a little while ago, that was just an ambulance going out, um, it was not more than just an ambulance. So that's based on the call type, so any very serious call type, now, that that unconscious, unresponsive may be somebody that's fainting, that's sitting up talking to us when we get there. But at the time of the call, we obviously don't know that, so, so we plan for the worst and and that's how we dispatch.
Yeah, and do we have to reimburse Fort Greg Adams for the assistance when they come? What about for your, any outside agencies?
So, so we have a, so we have a a mutual aid agreement with uh all the jurisdictions, actually, all the jurisdictions in central Virginia. Typically, if we request resources, um, and it's less than twenty-four hours worth of of use. Um, we typically get those for free and that, and that's because we would then provide that same service back to them. So we've gone into Fort Greg Adams uh to provide them services uh as well, so um, so we don't pay for that right now.
Another question is about the boat, when we first got this boat, did it break down within the first year?
It it's, it's been a nightmare since, since the beginning, it it really was a, and it was intended to be kind of a a prototype. That was was worked on over time, we were supposed to turn it in after a couple of years and get a new one that was improved. And and it was kinda supposed to be kind of a rotating thing where we, every couple of years into this lease agreement, we'd be getting a new boat. Uh, unfortunately, because the owner went out of business, um, we're left with a product that was kind of a prototype, um, and no one wants to work on it. Um, and so that's kinda what, why we're, we are where we are.
Another bad contract. All right, that's all I'll say to that one. All right, thank you.
Council Holloway and then Council Joyner.
Uh, well, certainly, definitely want a a an appropriate boat, uh, being in the best line of work. Uh, I see you guys, you go off to the plant and um, and everything, we got them ships coming in. It's, you know, I was stuck out there with you guys for six hours one time doing a removal. So uh, again, thank you for your work in all the rest of public safety. My question was to the fact of that, I think it was, how much was it, eighty thousand? Uh, the money to, for the medication and, or boxes or whatever that you have to provide?
Mm-hmm.
I forgot which page that was on, it's not numbered, I think it was eighty thousand, I don't know.
Yes, it was eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand, uh, now, is that a ongoing cost? Or will you become like a pharmaceutical company where you're charging the insurance company and receiving money back? So will we implement a first-time payment and then after that, you're taking care of it yourself with the money that you make or?
So, so in a sense, we, in a sense, it's a wash, because I've, you know, I just spoke about the seven hundred and some thousand dollars so far this year that we've brought in as far as revenue.
Right.
Um, so, so in in one sense, it will be a wash, in another sense, it won't be, because we've been charging, we're not gonna, our our rates. Um, are not gonna change immediately because of this, because basically what we're charging already includes the cost of those drugs. Um, even though it was, to us, it was free. Now, one of the things that we're looking at is a rate increase. Um, and that's something that's just on par with the rest of the jurisdictions around us, that's something that we're looking at right now, is possibly increasing our rates. Um, so, so that's something that may off, certainly offset it, but this is gonna be, so the the entirety, so this eighty thousand right now is, um, some of it is cap, you know, like. One-time costs and then some of it's ongoing. I would expect next year that this will most likely go down, because a lot of this is, you know, we've gotta now have a burglar alarm system on this room. We have to have access control on this room, we have to have cameras on this room. Um, so there's a lot of infrastructure and other things that we're gonna have to purchase one time. So I anticipate going into next year that this number will go down, however, because we've never paid for this before. We honestly don't have a good, solid number of what it's gonna cost us, we have some ideas, we've done some calculations and we think we're in a ballpark. Um, that's where we got the number from, um, but we're not gonna know until we get through a year of actually doing it and being able to see kinda where we land as far as the cost. But I do anticipate this going down, but it will be a reoccurring cost. I would anticipate that we might be looking at more like forty thousand going forward, but that just depends.
It'll be a reoccurring cost even after you increase.
Well, it'll be a reoccurring cost in the budget, but I, but if we increase our rates, then that would more than cover the cost.
All right, now, you had said something so fast, it was almost like one of them commercials. The little stuff at the bottom, read, you know, the fan print. Did I, did you say y'all get those boxes for free, but y'all charge the insurance for them, is that what you had said?
No, so we get it for free, but there's a, it's a flat rate, so in other words, we we charge based on ALS, BLS, whatever the case is. So on an ALS call, we charge a higher rate, okay, because it's an ALS call. And some of those costs are direct to us, so so for instance, some of the drugs we carry outside of that drug box.
Right.
So we purchase some of those drugs outside of the drug box, so we don't have to exchange it as much. Um, so we charge a higher rate for an ALS call, requires higher level of care, requires a a a higher level trained person that gets paid more, all those things. Um, however, that drug box program has always been free. Um, you know, other than the initial purchase of the box, like if we were to buy a new ambulance today, we're gonna have to buy a new box, it goes into the, it goes into the the system. But other than that, um, you know, the hospital is billing the patient for the box.
Right, so, so will y'all, um, so y'all will be able to bill them now? So s- since they have changed the obligation, y'all will be able to bill them for it, so y'all, y'all just won't take on that cost yourself?
We we won't be changing any item, we won't be itemizing, if if that's what you're asking, we're not gonna actually like add something that says now you're gonna get charged for the medications. But we are looking at our overall rate increase.
Got you.
So we could have, again, the the costs are very general, you know, an ALS call, BLS call, so forth and so on. Uh, and then an hour, and a mile, a rate based on mileage. So we will, we are looking at increasing our overall rate, but we won't be sending them a bill that says.
Right.
A drug box and this is what it costs.
Thanks so much for the information, thank you for the service.
Uh, Council Joyner?
Yeah, mine is very quick, um, I was going to um talk briefly about the one cent tax thing, just to make a note that we need to put that on the legislative list. Um, and make sure that we're ready for next year. Uh, you talked about this last year, I remember when we toured the facility. Um, and um, just make sure that we, we don't miss it next time. Thanks, thanks for all, thanks for all you do. And the picture was from my ward, that great shot of those flames coming out of that was, that was a fire not too long ago.
Oh, I do have one more question. Council Holloway?
The um, in the presentation, you were talking about the item that had not been replaced for thirteen years, when we were doing the tour, I I told you that was important to me. Cause you explained to me that, um, well, you explained to us rather, that. Basically, there's exhaust, um, not exhaust, what, what do you?
Exhaust from the trucks.
Right, the exhaust from the truck basically accumulates in those garages. And y'all are safety yourselves and it is definitely important that we give you the money so that those things can be replaced. And I think you had told us that Petersburg had just got basically dinged for it or something. Um, so we definitely don't want that happening to us and and especially for you all, I mean, cause you you're running them fire trucks and you have to keep the door open just to keep yourself safe. It ju- doesn't make sense, uh, and we don't want y'all pissed enough from an exhaust.
Thank you, Chief. All right, moving on to healthy families.
Good evening, um, we wanna thank you for the. Thank you for the opportunity for the Department of Healthy Family to be able to present our budget to you tonight. All right, so telling who we are. So the Department of Healthy Family is dedicated to providing family-centered education, enrichment opportunities. And promoting healthy lifestyles and relationship. Our mission is to prevent child abuse and neglect by empowering families to create safe and stable nurturing homes. Where children can thrive um through family-focused practices in the area. The Department of Healthy Family has two grant-funded programs, which are Healthy Families and Healthy Start Loving Steps. Um, the Department of Healthy Families takes pride in supporting each family we encounter. We provide court-mandated education that are free to the citizens of Hopewell, Petersburg and Prince George. We do receive fundings from those locality to provide those free services to the citizens. The department prioritizes each family unit, our efforts are reflected through our fatherhood program. We also have a sisterhood um support group, which is for moms. Um, as well as we provide playdates, teen parenting groups and a CAN, which is our community action network. Um, the CAN actually work with community partners as well as parents to um foster change that they want to see in the community. We provide a a array of programs and classes that are available and some are open to the public. We've provided birthing education, we have lactation specialists on staff, as well as conduct quarterly rotating. Um, classes such as infant massage. At the bottom is some of our. Projects, that, some of the outcomes through our parent groups, fatherhood, um, events. We had a lot of large events this year, one was our Bridge in the Gap event, um, as well as um our Blue Gala, which we have coming up. So who are we? We are a staff of eleven now, um. It's a lot of people, we have definitely grown. Some of our accomplishments this year, we um started an initiative that helped the parents build their own at-home library. So we got um each locality community leader read to the children, we put it on our social media. Each child was um given books to build their at-home library. For some of our parents that are unable to read, we. For some of our parents that are unable to read, we recorded it so that the parent could listen to that with their child anytime. We also had stepping back into school and style. We were able to fundraise and give back a hundred shoes to students in Hopewell. Like I also talked about, we also did a thing with Virginia Department of Health, where we provide community health training to some of our participants, and also to some of the people that we were able to help with emergency crises funds. All right, so the emergency crises funds, let me talk about. So, we definitely want to thank city council. It's because of you guys, we were able to assist thirty-two families so far this year with the emergency crises funds. Also, with that being said, two of those families were able to work with us with a program that partnered with our department that put them through community health worker training. And they were able to receive that certificate, as well as eight hundred dollar stipend. They received an iPad, as well as a keyboard. They also worked along with my staff with community groups and the dinner internship. So, I do want you guys to know, being that you gave that money, it did do a life-changing thing for them. We had some that actually obtained job from that community health worker training, so...
With your permission, Mr. Mayor, we have an update that also breaks in by board and by Secretary of State of how we were able to assist these citizens in emergency crises by making...
Yeah, just pass it to Clark, and we'll pass them down.
And I'm going to jump in too, before she goes into her budget. You have letters of support from the families. There were some that were handwritten to you, thanking you guys for helping them through a crisis. And so, towards the end of their presentation, you'll see letters in addition to the help provided in a breakdown by board.
So, what to expect from our department next year? Well, Karen, you're coming up. Parent education, we're going to include a co-parenting. We've been getting a lot of calls about that. Applying for more funding sources. We're also going to offer free-to-low-cost CPR classes for Hopewell citizens. We're going to focus on our fatherhood initiative and offer quarterly mammogram testing at a site in Hopewell. We're working with Virginia Massey, so they're going to bring in the mobile unit where they can offer those to the citizens. We're going to do more educational class and do more interactive stuff on our website. All right. So, our acts this year, it, it may look like a large increase, but it's actually not. Our grants have actually increased. So, our VDSS grant has went up to twenty-four thousand, and then the VDH grant has went up to forty-nine thousand, which is actually a seventy-three thousand dollar increase. So, our budget increase act is actually seventy-seven thousand. And so, the difference is only four thousand and seventy-two dollars. So, that's our acts. How we're planning on spending that additional funding from our grants is actually kind of outlined in the grants with management consultants, so having special speakers, therapeutic services for the families as well. We'll also, some will go to our rent for our new place that we had to relocate to. And then also, because we are in-home visitation, some will also go to the vehicles. And then, the next slide you're going to see is just an outline of the grants and also funding, different funding sources that we have. And as Dr. Makers say, we have letters of support, just thanking you guys for the emergency crises fund, and also for the Department of Healthy Families. Do you, you guys have any questions?
Vice Mayor Gore?
Well, I just want to say thank you for taking on the challenge of establishing a way to give out the, the emergency funds. We did do that with our ARPA dollars this last go-around, and you guys had to start from scratch with creating a system to deliver the money or hand out the money. So, thank you for taking that on. Thank you for the detailed reports. I'm pretty sure Ms. Pershing was behind this. So, I would say thank you, Ms. Pershing. My only question that I really have is, what is the four thousand increase? Is it for something specific, or is it because that's your net thingy, and it came out to be just a four thousand increase?
It's the net.
Okay.
And the increase came out to be four thousand with adding on a new car. We had a car that was like twenty years old, and we, it broke down, so we took it to get its service, and they were like, the car blue book value was only a thousand dollars, and it was three thousand dollars to get it fixed, so we had to get a new car.
So, is the four thousand for the car, or is it for, again, when the custom mind just wash out, that's what's left?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
The public works to their credit, did try to revive on the...
Okay.
All right, Counselor Pellon, then Counselor Denton.
So, I think I understand now. So, in your management consulting services, you said an increase of five thousand, but then per the grant? So, you're saying the budget for City of Hopewell only increases four thousand seventy-two, correct?
Right. Yes.
And all the other increases are covered by the grants that you receive?
Yes.
Okay. And you total, you're working with now sixty families directly?
In the City of Hopewell.
Okay. And you work with how many outside of Hopewell? I mean, do they spend our money outside?
So, they're grant-funded. So, we're spending grant money.
Okay.
And then, so if you're asking about emergency funds, those are only designated to Hopewell citizens. But we do receive emergency funds from Petersburg, but they give, give, well, they're funding through Petersburg.
Who we service.
Yeah.
In our programs.
Through our emergency money?
Yes.
Through their emergency money?
No, through the emergency money that Petersburg gives. Gives to the Department of Healthy Families from their outside budget.
Add money now? How much do they contribute to the framework?
Thirty thousand.
Prince George and Petersburg?
Prince George, twenty-five thousand.
Okay. Any other county or city contribute?
At this current time, that's all we're serving.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Denton?
I just want to thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you.
And I know you're helping a lot of families, and I think that's good for our city to be able to do that. And you're the dedicated people that make that happen. I would like to say I'm looking forward to the Blue Light, the Blue Gala, and save me a ticket. That's the twenty-sixth of April, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's one of your fundraisers, so I'm hoping more people will be involved this year than were last year, since that was your first one.
Yes.
And this way, it does help our community.
Yes, it does.
So, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
I have to say, in the twenty-seven years I've been with the city, this is probably the most rewarding. I said I've always worked hard for the city, but this is, instead of hard work, it's heart work. So, helping the families and seeing those smiling faces, that's why I'm here. That's why we're here, and that's why we make a difference.
These letters are wonderful. I mean, it makes a difference.
Thank you.
Shante, shante, Ms. Will, can I give you this note? Thank you for your service as well.
You know, they stay at school. If you read it out loud, you're going to be passing those around.
I'm the teacher.
All right, thank you, guys.
She was my student.
All right, HR?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My requests are straightforward. I only have three of them. The first one is eighteen hundred dollar increase in award allowances. The second one is three thousand dollars in office supplies. And then, the third one is a big amount, but that's a recommendation for a class in comp study, so that amount is two hundred thousand dollars, so. And that's a recommendation from the board group.
Okay.
Any questions?
What is actually in the budget? Is it first two, Mr. Branson?
Yes, that's actual increase request. So, right now, my current budget for award and luncheons is thirteen thousand two hundred.
No, I'm saying the only two increases that are worked in our draft budget is the first you asked, not the two hundred, right?
Yes. Class and comp's not in there. Yeah, just the two.
I only have just, I mean, this isn't a question, but it's a, a recommendation. With the classification compensation study, just, I ask for an implementation plan that is just realistic.
Yes.
That's all that I ask for out of it, because I just, I hate to throw two hundred thousand dollars at something and get employees' hopes up, and it says they're going to get something like a fifty percent pay raise.
Dang.
I just, I just ask for something that's realistic and something that the City of Hopewell can financially afford.
Yes, and when we're ready to launch it, it could be a conversation. Well, we'll have conversations with the city manager exactly what the proposal is.
Okay. Uh, Count, Vice Mayor Gore, and then Counselor Pellon.
So, hard to point. When we last did a class in comp study, council gave very specific instructions. So, let's just be clear, this also starts to come through council for approval, not only because of the money part, because we ultimately adopt the HR manual for the city per the charter. So, the class and comp say drives, pay grades, and all this other stuff that goes before council. So, when council last chartered this, we gave manager very specific instructions on what we wanted. The results we got back was nowhere near what we had asked for. So, that's part of that hesitancy that you might hear from existing council members in regards to how, what product this looks like. So, since this is not in the budget, what was the plan to try to fund this, or to have us consider it? Because we need to have conversations, obviously, about what that would look like in terms of contract expectations.
So, the city manager and I actually had this conversation when she became interim. Currently, our third-party vendor, One Digital, they would be the ones that would be, that would be conducting the study. It's just a branch of our current contract. And so, I think the intent is for them to come and show you guys, because we have a whole presentation that they gave us, and we were going to come to council and present it, but we didn't get that far, because then we had to do budget cuts. So, we've already kind of started that background, we just stopped because of, of the budget cuts.
So, the, so, okay, thank you for that information. So, then my question for Mr. Branson is still like the two hundred K, if it's not in our budget, this is going to be an additional cost we have to find monies for, correct? That's what I'm trying to figure out. Okay, so, it's unfunded until we decide to find monies elsewhere to fund this.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Counselor Pellon?
Yeah. Is there any way we can get a timeline?
You got to come back.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
She was like, I'm free.
I'm trying to get squeezed out of it as much as I can.
You're not free yet. Is there any way you can give us a timeline of when you're going to present the HR manual to council to review? Is that going to be done before the end of the fiscal year?
So, Ms. Pellon, we decided we was going to set up a, a committee, and that, we need to talk about that in the, in, at the next meeting. But you volunteered to be on that committee?
Yeah, I did, but I, we haven't met yet.
Okay, so...
We'll put the committee on the agenda.
On the agenda for, for Tuesday.
And then, city attorney asked, do we need to circle back to the class and comp conversation for funding for council? Do we need to have staff come back with that to talk about funding options, or are we just going to lay this on the table?
I think that they're still going to come back and answer all our questions, and I think that they probably, you know, I mean, there's, we've heard like different cost-saving things tonight, so I think they're going to probably reshuffle and reprioritize.
No, I'm just saying, if we sit, but we didn't say we support this. So, so, it's kind, it's not funded, so we have to say, do we want them to find money for this? That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, well, like I said, I think that, I think they need...
The council decide, right?
Right, but I think that they all need to go back, because we've heard probably about five hundred thousand dollars worth of savings tonight, and I don't think we want to sit here and cherry pick folks without knowing a full picture.
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is council needs to still give directive if we want them to find it.
Well, I think last year, we all said we were still supportive of it.
I don't know, you need to poll council right now, this is a budget session for right now. That's what I'm saying.
Is everyone okay with them going forward and putting this on a priority list for us?
The class and compensation.
The class and compensation study.
Well, we're told by finance that if we're going to get, for all the money that we may need, we need to identify new revenues, so I...
That, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to get to, is we've had departments tonight come to us and tell us that they have cost savings. They need to pool it all together, and then they need to go back, and everyone needs to revise and meet, and then they can come back to us. And, yeah, you know, this was a priority last year, you know, for us, just like, I think it's still a priority this year, but I don't think we can commit to anything tonight, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, yeah, last year was, may have been for some people, but tonight, since we're getting feedback from staff, and we need to get the manager directive saying, yes, we agreed to go find money for this, and let them come back to your point. Right now, it's just a, it's a topic. There's no guidance to say, yeah, we want you to do it. So, I'm saying like if...
That's what I'm saying, I think that, I mean, is, I mean, is everyone in the guidance with that, is this is going on a priority list?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, tonight, we're listening from the departments and their needs.
So, is this still a priority?
And then, we can do ours.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, I mean, we're all shaking our heads here that, yes, it's going on a priority list, but we're not going to say this is our number-one item.
I didn't say it, just make sure it's on the list.
Right, but that's what I'm saying. So, yes, you, okay, you understand the assignment.
Just because they present it doesn't mean that we support it, right?
So, Dr. Mank, you understand the assignment?
I mean, technically speaking, we've heard several different asks, and there's no clear directive.
We'll see how we can fit it in, and if we can't, we'll bring it back to you to say, you know, we got to make some hard choices. Otherwise, it'll be there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Harris?
Can you see me shaking my head?
Yeah.
I'm shaking my head too.
Yeah, that's the big ask.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for HR?
Let's move on.
Thank you. All right, IT?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm going to actually proceed to, in the interest of time, to page four, please.
Four?
Four, yes, ma'am. I'm going to start off with our service contract budget line item. That is our budget line item, is the largest of the year, the largest of the, of all of our budgets we have. Tyler Technologies Munis is the largest software that we use for the city. We use it for our finance system, we use it for Open Finance, Parks and Rec, Executon, and a whole lot more, real estate, treasury. This year, we are adding contract management and bid management to the suite of projects. With these additions, the increase has, the increase is about twenty-six percent for that particular line item. Tyler Incode is our courts management system. That has increased to about ten percent this year. Our, our surveillance system, we have started several years ago, it's called the Vercata system. You've probably heard many things about it with the police and everybody using it. We use it all across the building. We use it all across the buildings, we use it on streets. We are continuously adding more cameras to the city to help the security along the way. We're requesting an additional twenty-five thousand to cover increasing yearly service costs. The Wi-Fi access points, Maraki Wi-Fi access points, just like above my head, they're scattered all through the city. Three years ago, we purchased three-year licenses for our access points. It now had, need, we need now, we need to now include it into our budget, and we're asking for seventy-five hundred dollars to cover that. So for our service line items, the total increase is ninety-three thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars. Our telephone fax video line item consists of your internet connections, voice over IP, email, anything connection related. Is your Zoom meetings, when you have Zoom meetings, that's your connectivity really, that's all covered under that. General vendors have increased their costs up to five percent. So we're asking for an increase of seventy-four hundred dollars and thirty-eight dollars to cover those expenses. Our training line item is used for training the staff as well as Munis implementations. So for the budgets, for the bid and contracts modules, there's additional training required, and we're asking for twelve thousand six hundred fifty dollars to cover the costs for that, the training coming as well. So for total operation budgets for IT is an increase of one hundred and fourteen thousand sixty dollars. Moving to our capital projects, we have four. The first one is our network core switches, they're Cisco switches. We purchased them five and a half, six years ago. Servers, hardware, and software have about a five to six-year lifespan. They are vital to keep their network running, and without them, nobody can do anything. They are coming end of service, and we, if, if we have a failure, we may not be able to get parts. Not guaranteed, but we may not. By 2025, the parts will no longer be available, so we'll have to be replacing. If we have a failure, it'll be a critical failure, the, the network will be down, and we do not want that to happen. So I would need to try and get these replaced as soon as possible. The cost would be about one hundred and seven thousand dollars, one hundred, one hundred and seven thousand one hundred dollars for those. Host servers is my second project. We currently have eight host servers. Host servers are different than the application servers. The application servers are your Munis servers, your police servers, your telephone servers. The host servers run all these little tiny servers. We have eight, four of those servers are, have reached end of life, and we need to replace these four servers. We cannot no longer get any parts for those. Their estimated cost to replace these is one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars to replace these four servers. Our third product, CIP, has to do with Microsoft Office. Our current version of Microsoft Office is 2016, it's eight years old. Currently, Office 2021 is available, or Office 365. 2021 is what they call a perpetual license, so you buy it, and you use it for so many years, then you have to buy another version. Office 365 is a yearly con, yearly service contract you purchase. But you will be up to date on software all the time if you go that way out. We need to plan to update the software instead of continuing to use this outdated software. We have two versions of 2016, we even have versions of 2013 and 2010 still floating out there in some cases. The request for this line item at this point is two hundred and ten thousand dollars, or we need to consider moving to a Office 365 at a yearly cost, which is to be determined. And the final CIP goes back to the one that Dr. Menke mentioned last year, print managed solution. There are over a hundred printers in the city. Supply costs are currently being handled by each department as needed. So if they need toner, they need service, they would call IT for the service, we would dispatch somebody, and the department pays for the service, or they pay for the toner themselves. They would call and order it through Staples or wherever they get it. If we went with a managed print solution, it would be a yearly fee. Toner supplies would be supplied by this managed solution, so when your printer says it needs a new cartridge, it will automatically be shipped to you. If you need service, that same company would come out to repair the device, and they'd all be handled under the service contract. The yearly cost for this would be thirty-six thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Any questions?
Okay.
And I forgot to change the slides, I apologize.
That's all right. Counselor Joyner?
I do have one question. Has to do with, with our website. And, you know, the website that we currently have, I mean, is that, y'all talked about that, and how it serves the city, that kind of thing. It seems that it's not very functional, and it is sort of the, people go to our city's website. Maybe perhaps, because even updating boards and commissions, it's impossible to do? Or that's basically what we've been told. That's a pretty big thing, and I wondered if any of that has been discussed.
It's been talked about. We have to deal with the different departments in the city, and some are more responsive than others to try and get data updated.
Okay.
So, it's, it's, it's an ongoing task.
Uh-huh. But I mean, is there, who, do you, who maintains it? I mean, does IT maintain it?
IT maintains it, yes.
Yeah, yeah. And in working with our city clerk, I know she has had difficulty making changes to the website. I think it's a big deal. And, you know, I think it needs to be somewhere in here. There needs to be, you need to consider how you address that.
Okay, thank you.
I think. That's just my opinion.
Okay.
I agree.
All right, before we let anyone else go, do I have a motion to extend the meeting until we finish the agenda? For the, I should say, the list of all the requests?
So move.
All right, motion's been made by Counselor Joyner, I'll second it. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yep.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yeah.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pellon?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
I was trying to figure what he was trying to say. I was trying to figure if he said.
Motion, pass it to Sarah.
Make it quick.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Pellon.
Now you know I forgot my thought.
What was the name?
Wait a minute, no. Oh, yeah, couldn't it be a simple case of the directors, if they're on a particular commission, to contact Mr. Larkin, what his name is, that does the website? And then update that when there are new commissioners or something? I mean, something, I mean, it could be as simple as that, I don't know, is that hard to do?
No, that's not hard to do, just getting it coordinated.
What's the ask? What's the ask?
I, I, it's always been a complaint that the commissions and boards are not updated. Either give her access to do it.
That's what we've asked for, she can't get access.
She can't get access.
Right, that's, that's been the holdup, we want her to maintain exclusively, she can't get access.
So the, the, the board and commission is a, is a application that was approved by council year before last, or two years. It's actually separate from the website. When you click on it, you notice it goes out to a link to a website, and I'm not really, you know.
Well, why would you do that? I mean, bring it back in house?
It is, it is what you guys approved in a presentation that was brung to you from a vendor.
I don't remember that. The key is, she's get access.
Yeah.
And, and, and it's been long enough, it's been months of trying to get her access, if we, if, whatever, I, I still don't understand what the holdup is. But if she still can't get access, I think you should look at canceling the vendor and come back to council on this note. But let her just manually have a landing page to enter information.
It's a real problem. That is, you know, when people go to, look at our city, they go to our website.
It's too long.
And it's, it's, it's a real problem, so I'm just suggesting that, I don't know if it is something that needs to be included in the budget, but you're here in front of us, and so, so, okay, thank you so much.
I have a question.
All right, Counselor Holloway, and then Vice Mayor Gore.
This, this not to the presenter, this to the.
That's been Counselor Joyner's line.
We just voted, we just voted. We just voted to extend this meeting to the end of the, we got to a third of this, are we talking about fin?
Yeah, we're talking about finishing, completing this whole book.
So what's your net ask, what's your net ask for money, new money?
It's a hundred and fourteen thousand plus.
Okay.
That's for operations.
That's operation, correct.
A hundred and fourteen thousand?
Capital is.
Hundred eight, four hundred eighty-five thousand? Four hundred eighty-five thousand.
Four hundred eighty-five thousand for capital?
No, that's what you had, this here.
Okay, capital, that's new request. Okay, got it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And both, Mr. Russ, both are, is both of his in our budget, the capital one too?
Not, not the capital.
Yeah, I mean, the cap, the capital, that's what I said last week, we haven't, we're trying to find funding for it, and that will definitely, probably won't find funding for everything, so there'd definitely be a priority based on, based on these cuts, based on some possible additional revenues.
So this is what I'm trying to get council to listen to. If you're saying that, then you need to hear from us what our consensus is for what you should prioritize.
Correct.
So we need to say that when we have these departments up there, so you can know what to fund and not fund.
All right, police? And just for the sake and interest of time, in everyone's bedtime? So we do bottom line upfronts?
Straight to there.
Straight to the request.
Show me the money.
We don't need descriptions of your departments, we know what you guys do.
We know what you do.
Mayor Parton, I'm Kim Parsons. Members of council, good evening. We're gonna give you our budget request for fiscal year 2025. And if you would, start with page four, that kind of gives you the bottom line upfront. In total, police is asking for a million dollars, a hundred, a million, twelve hundred thousand, two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollar increase. And it's itemized by department code. The department is divided into seven divisions, admin, command, patrol, detectives, property and evidence, dispatch, and animal control. So you'll see the, the different requests for the increases in order that you would find them in Munis, kind of page by page, section by section. Most of our increases are in service accounts. We have lots of different modules and software systems to facilitate the work that police and dispatch does. So if you look at the chart on page four, you'll see we're looking first to get a part-time contractor for background checks. We have a training officer, we have a officer who does secondary polygrapher duties. But we don't have any one person identified to conduct background checks to fill our vacancies. And right now, we have more than ten vacancies for sworn positions. So to keep officers on the road, get the backgrounds done, we need to have a retired police person, police officer, conduct the background checks for us. In addition, starting next with our service contracts, Crater Criminal Justice Academy has increased its prices. Crater serves professional development and basic dispatch and animal control, and basic law enforcement services for all of our staff. So they have an increase, and that's one increase. We recently implemented flock surveillance cameras, or flock license plate reader cameras. Each of those cameras has a SIM card, which is another, which is another expense under service contracts. And that's down at the bottom, I'm jumping ahead. But with the flock, we have thirty-four cameras, and ten cameras, the annual fee is thirty thousand dollars a year. So for the thirty-four cameras, that's ninety thousand dollars increase, in addition to the SIM card, which is like a cellphone, a thirty-six dollar amount, thirty-six dollars a month cost per camera to keep it running and functional. That represents the fifty-one hundred dollar increase on the third line. And the next line is our training budget. So we've asked for an additional thousand dollars increase in training dollars for admin and support staff. Command staff contracts, it's a CPI increase of, consumer price index increase for our command projects. That includes something like the Power DMS that we talked about earlier. Power DMS is also, it has a policies and procedures module, it has an internal affairs module, it has a field training officer module, so that's the increase there. When officers go to training, most of it, or not most, but we have some that's in southwest Virginia that they have to go to, and that entails an overnight expense, lodging per diem, gas reimbursement. So that's where you see those thousand dollar amounts. We also have had an increase in extradition, so we've had three, I think, since July of 2023. So there's an added expense for extradition costs for an officer to go out of state, pick up an RST, and bring them back to state, back to Virginia to face trial. And then in the command line with awards and luncheons, so we've had an increase, and this is, it says awards and luncheons, but we're actually using this line for many of our community-based projects. On the front of the packet, you'll see members participating in the Citizens Police Academy. So that's a function that we provide for the citizens, so they can learn the department. Those things are, have an expense in preparing binders for them, having, taking them to Richmond, to different, they go to Richmond to ECPI?
Yes.
To one of the schools, so they do similar, so that's the cost of, of running a, a Citizens Police Academy. The next big jump is overtime. We have been running overtime expenses for the last five years as we have overtime to cover the vacancies fills, so that we can maintain minimum staffing. And I'll defer to the chief and to Major Reed for the minimum staffing piece. The next part is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for career advancement for sworn staff, animal control, and dispatchers. The purpose of career advancement is to retain the staff that we have. We want to give them some incentives to recognize their knowledge, skill, and ability, and their position in the time that they've served with Hopewell, and we want to keep them in Hopewell. There's too much institutional knowledge that goes out of the door when we spend the money to train people, and then they go to another agency, usually for just a few dollars more, and they could stay if we were able to keep them with a retention bonus, or rather, a career advancement bonus. The next piece is the sign-on bonus, and that's a hundred thousand dollars that is, we've not had in the past, but I defer again to the chief, Madam City Manager, for the hiring bonus piece, to, to get folks to come to Hopewell to start working. As we get new officers in, there is a physical fitness requirement. We send them to a hospital for a physical fitness testing, and HR and the risk management officer have started doing the drug urinalysis testing, and that, and that bill comes back to us. So there is an increase in that for those outside vendor expenses. Additionally, the police department is, has somebody in it twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and there is wear and tear on the interior of the building, so that also has some money added in there so that we can keep the, the facility in a good condition with some interior painting and touch-ups, that type of thing. Service contracts in patrol, TASER seven is a proprietary device, and they've increased their prices. We've signed agreements with them, or it's part of the, the buyback, get a new TASER for an old TASER type of program. That's a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars a year. So the difference in that requested amount, we've already got money in that account for TASER. Last year, it was, it had been sixty-seven thousand for three, for four years, but it's gone up. So the difference in the pricing on the TASER is there at the nine thousand one oh seven. A couple of years ago, when Chief Stark was here, we talked about vehicles, and we entered into a lease agreement with Enterprise Lease. So last year, or this current fiscal year is the first year of that lease. So there is money for the lease for this first year, and then we are due to receive new vehicles in the second year of the lease. So when you see that a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar increase for lease of a vehicle, that's year one lease and year two lease. So that's cars that are coming in presently, and then the cars we anticipate getting next year. So that's two years of lease payments for vehicles. The next is what I spoke about earlier, the Flock camera maintenance or service agreement amounts, about a ninety thousand dollar increase. Again, additional monies for, uh, detectives to go overnight for training or for extradition. Where did I have that? That's me, monies for meals to go, to go for, um, the extraditions and the trainings. Service contracts in property and evidence. We've had the same expense for property and evidence software for the last ten years or so, and they just went up and had an increase. So that's a two thousand dollar increase on software for property and evidence. And then the records division. So in records, we have, uh, CAD, mobile field reporting, online reporting, e-ticketing. I think that's it. So all of those different softwares are bundled in a package, and they, uh, hit our records management database with all of the offender information. That has an increase as well. So with records management system, it's used by the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office. They have access to records management. On the CAD side, it's used at the fire department, they have access to it. So the public safety, uh, software and, um, I guess brains, if you will, is housed in police, but it's not just our device. The sheriff's office also uses the records management system. So we all have access to the same pool of information. We all have different functions for it, it's housed in police. So we have the, um, primary contract expense for records management. And the last is dispatch, the service contracts in dispatch. There are lots of them. We have three different Motorola contracts, um, with, um, for the radio. We have, uh, Carousel, which is a vendor who handles the call handling equipment. So when calls come into the building, you can't just use a regular PBX. The call handling equipment has to be specific to the phones that are routed by all the cellphone carriers and the, the telephone carriers into your building, into the nine-one-one center. So that equipment is at end of life, and that accounts for the hundred and forty-five thousand dollar increase. We are, um, I guess fortunate that if the state budget passes, nine-one-one is a priority and has its own, um, state agency, VDM. And if they are, uh, successful with their, or if their current budget passes, some of this cost for this, uh, dispatch equipment is reimbursable under a grant that we will apply for. Again, total amount of our expected increases or our request is a million dollars. Chief, do you have anything you want to add?
Just an update on the, um, the patrol overtime costs. Uh, we had, uh, been budgeted three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars for the last five years or more, and we requested to go up to six hundred thousand. However, since we discussed this, we have gone back to the regular amount. So that will be a dis, decrease in that, uh, overtime costs of, we'll save two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And that, uh, funds will, we will be, we'll be getting those funds back because of the vacancies. And we have sixteen vacancies right now. And if we, if you calculate sixteen vacancies, as of right now, that's over a million dollar savings. So we will be, uh, receiving some of that overtime money back because of, because of that.
Okay, uh, Councilor Holloway, and then Councilor Joyner.
Sign-on bonuses in additional request aside of the sign-on bonuses that have already been approved?
No. No, sir. The sign-on bonuses, the bonuses that was approved in this budget were one-time bonuses. They came with a contract three or four years. What this is referred to, okay, recruitment and retrain, um, retention is a hundred thousand dollars. And that's our recruitment and retention program, which offers twelve thousand dollars for, uh, those who are not sworn.
Uncertified.
Uncertified. I'm looking for the answer. Uncertified, and twenty thousand for those who come to us already trained. Uh, that is where that, um, recruitment and retainment costs, where we have to have monies to be able. Now, please be mindful, when you are recruited, you receive a four-year contract. So that ensures that no one is trained and, and it only stays for a year, and, and we've lost our, our costs. But we are sixteen vacancies, and so they have a recruitment program, and they're working hard to try to recruit for that sixteen, for those sixteen vacancies.
So this is the program that we already discussed. This is just the difference of, this is just the added my, request for basically what we've, what's already been brought to us.
No, those were one-time.
No, not that. We, we still discuss the recruitment bonus. Nevermind, I understand that. Uh, my other thing is, is a ten thousand dollar awards luncheon. How many r, awards luncheon, and what type of, that's like eight hundred dollars a month, wha, what type of?
So they have awards cer, ceremony twice a year, right?
Yes.
At least twice, twice a year.
Five thousand dollars.
Uh, to recognize the, uh, all the hard work that, that, that the officers do and, under the circumstances. It's just, this is just, I would say, natural cost increase because food has increased, and so they.
Five thousand dollars.
Food is expensive. I mean, it's twice a year. I mean, what, it's. There's a five thousand dollar increase, this, this.
Is it just food, it could be certificates?
It could be certificates.
Oh, so this includes all of that.
Yeah, it could be, uh, awards, we have our, uh, luncheons, our memorial events, and, and, and other recogni, recognition.
Tracking, okay.
All right, uh, Councilor Joyner?
Yeah, my question, it relates to overtime versus salaries. When we're looking at those numbers, you, you know, we had, you, you increased the overtime budget because that's what you've been using. And do you, is it realistic to anticipate filling, I mean, when I, I, I can't see the whole salary picture right here. But when we're looking at the total salary plus the overtime, are we reducing the salaries? I mean, are, you know, our projections, can you answer that, Mr. Branson?
Yeah, sorry. Uh, yes, so one of the reasons we, we moved this down, as Chief said, was that, um, there's two kinds of overtime. Sometimes it's overtime that's driven by vacancies.
Right.
And that, so we already have the, the vacancies are budgeted, so the overtime gets covered in those costs. We don't need to budget for that extra overtime. And there's overtime because there's an incident where you've, you had to stay over, or you're going to court, or whatever that is. That's the kind of bu, that's kind of overtime we wanna budget.
That's all I was, I was just trying to get the, the, because I, we have these vacancies.
We don't wanna budget it twice.
Exactly, that was, that was my question, and I couldn't see the numbers there. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no more lights, thank you guys both.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, moving on to, uh, Public Works.
All right, this is gonna be fun.
Can we go to the end first, like, get the smaller people first?
No, 'cause recreation is long, sheriff.
I think pretty much everyone that's left is.
Social services, we can knock out really quick. Um, because they're state, they're state, and they don't.
Let's not get what?
Social services.
Is everyone okay with going to social services first?
Yeah.
Okay.
You ain't gotta tell me, but what?
Yeah, because the money, they have.
Michael, we're gonna go to social services first.
Yeah, we're gonna do them real quick.
All righty then.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council members. Um, I would like to start by saying that, um, my budget is actually a decrease of al, almost thirteen thousand dollars.
How did you do that?
But you're still not as good as Mr. Branson.
I did that because, um, last year, we requested more local funding than we needed to this year. And so as a result, um, my, um, what I am requesting for local funding is fourteen thousand one hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Um, the last budget, I requested almost twenty-seven thousand dollars. So.
What color is your thing?
It's a decrease because of our staff and our operations have decreased. We've had, um, individuals who have retired out, um, with higher salaries, and so all of that has an impact on that as well.
Thank you for your service. You said a decrease, you can't no more. Drive safely.
All right, such a wonderful presentation. My favorite so far.
All right. Pardon me.
I'll give you a, I'll give you a minute if you can be first.
He going straight to just the ask, and you gotta do all that?
Yeah, uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I have, uh, our twenty-five requests here for you tonight. I've talked or dealt with, with most of you here since I've been here, and, and I, I know that most of you had a good idea of what we do. Um, I'm not gonna use up this time to read this to you, but I would appreciate it, if you haven't already, to please take a good look at the presentations that my staff and I put together. Thank you very much to my staff for, for putting a lot of effort into this. Pardon me. I'm gonna get right to brass tacks. Um, and I'm gonna try to burn through it. So we have increases, um, in our conference attendance, lodging, uh, travel and public transportation and meals, in the amount of twelve thousand four hundred dollars. Um, we have quite a bit of new staff, as you're well aware. Uh, when I came on board, I think, in engineering at Stormwater, it was myself and Josh Semantelli. That was it. Um, we have nearly a fully staffed department now. Uh, and I think most of you have seen my announcements of who I've hired and who we brought on board. Very proud of my team, and, uh, we've come a long way in a short amount of time. So, all that being said, we need to be able to get to these conferences. The APWA stuff for the operational side is, uh, is vital for, uh, us keeping up with the times and, and running efficient operations. The, um, munis conference speaks for itself, and, uh, the, the lead conference is, is a, something that I did it from Colonial Heights that, uh, I think will be extremely useful for, uh, for our staff. Service contracts, convention conferences, repair, uh, repair, maintenance supplies. Again, that's, that's the cost of doing business. We are, uh, that's eighty-eight thousand dollars. The service contracts, it's, it, everything has gone up. Um, and our infrastructure is just getting older and older. Our, our traffic signals are, are aging out, literally. We can't find the parts to fix these things, so. If we go down to fleet, thirty thousand dollars. Yes, the school bus repair comes out of our budget. Um, and we need more money for it. Management Consulting Services, I wanna explain this to you, this is a big increase, sixty-eight thousand dollars. I, I was just before my time, but I think all, all, yeah, all of you had to have been here. You remember when Maurice came to you about the bridges?
Yes.
Okay, this is that.
Okay, good.
The bridges are due now, again. We just finished last month, the final inspection.
So this is only by the bridges?
It's a every-two-year, it's a every-two-year requirement by the FHWA. So that's what this increase is. It's our normal service contracts, and it's the bridges being done on time.
Yeah, 'cause it says economic development planning, so all this extra, so why don't you just say bridges?
I'm sorry, let's see. I don't care what you need. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, that's for, that's, that's, that portion of that is what we pay Sustainable Strategies for, grant-riding services. We hold that, we kind of, we kind of pay the retainer fee for the city. Through Public Works. So that's what that is.
Okay.
So that's, I use them, Charles uses them, everybody uses them.
Okay, that makes sense now.
But we just pay like the retainer. So, uh, the rest of these are kind of ex, explanatory, self-explanatory. The VDOT stuff, the TCMI stuff, the program workshops, these are the opportunities that we have to network, find out about the grants, get the inside scoop, and, and these are, these are the ways that we, um, we, we make our relationships and, and get help from VDOT. And just to give you an idea of how important that is, um, we're wrapping up a pipeline study, we've got a bunch of things in the works. I've come before you before about grants. I suspect that within the next three months, Public Works will have about sixty million dollars in requests out for projects. So we're, we're doing what we can. That sixty million dollar request is a hundred percent reimbursable. Now, of course, we're not gonna get all that.
Right.
But we may get twenty million. So like I said, if you have a chance, please, please take a really good look at this. Uh, solid waste, you can see here what's happened. Um, I, I, I wanna say that this, this dumpster situation has been a nightmare. You can see that the, um, it's gonna cost us forty grand to fix it. We need to fix it, it looks terrible. And unfortunately, it's our responsibility, because that's the way it was set up. Another, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hold on, guys, let's, let's let him finish the presentation first.
I'd be happy to answer questions about that, um, or anything on here. The cemetery fund, this is important, uh, we actually, we're asking for more, but, um, budget constraints and some issues with funds, we know, we all know about that. So we're asking for twenty-five thousand dollars. Five thousand dollars will go towards, uh, uh, the repair and leveling of headstones. Right now and forever, the cemetery has a book. One paper book. That's where everything is logged, where everybody is buried, who's bought what. And that's, that's it. That's it. Speaking about websites and all this, uh, we are asking for twenty grand for the proper software to track all of the information for the cemetery. You could, I don't think I need to explain to you how, how badly we need that. And, uh, there's added benefits, you can actually see the picture here, Robin. This is, this is the book. Uh, so that's, uh, that's for the twenty-five thousand dollar request. For Stormwater, um, we're just keeping that flat. Um, I will say that, uh, we'll be having future discussions on, on, on how to, or if council's interested in raising some funds because of that, uh, through Stormwater. I've done some pretty extensive research with my team on that. This is important, this is something I need to highlight. This is the equipment that we use. And, um, God knows how important our police officers are to us and our fire department. I myself have, have been saved by an ambulance before. Uh, nobody goes anywhere without their roads, without the infrastructure.
Without what?
Nothing gets done, businesses don't come to Hopewell, nothing happens. So you can see here, we've got a twenty-five-year-old dump truck. It's not the only one that old, but it's our tandem, and it's the one that we rely on the most. If we're pushing snow, and thank, thank God we haven't had any for three years, sorry, Ms. Denton. Uh, it's little, it's the lead truck, or excuse me, it's the back truck, it has to be, because it's, that's, the weight gets worse and worse and worse. Hauling asphalt, debris, storm cleanup, you name it, what we do, that's what we need. And you can see pictures here of the condition it's in. It's, you can step on it and have a piece come off. We've had to fabricate, our fleet, uh, our fleet has had to fabricate straps because you can't buy them for the fuel tank. They've made straps to hold fuel tank on. This is true for the second dump truck, the leaf act is in terrible shape. Um, the backhoe i, is, is, is aging out. That's the, that's the reality, the ab, the backhoe is aging out. Uh, it does function. So these are also self-explanatory. So these are also self-explanatory, a hundred and thirty one thousand dollars. These are, these are things that just come out of our budget, but they're for other people. Repaint, re-sil exterior city halls, streetlight improvements, ADA master plan, we need to move forward with that. We've heard about that, we talk about that all the time. We gotta get, we gotta do something with that. That's been, um, in the works, I guess, for over a decade maybe. And HVAC upgrade for social services who suffers from a terrible humidity problem, actually doing damage to the building. So we do need to address that. Just, we, I'm, I, I know, I'm not asking for this, I want you to be aware of this. We need a lead technician, shop foreman, shop supervisor, lead mechanic, whatever you wanna call it. We need somebody between our fleet manager and our mechanics. We need that, we need that desperately, but we're gonna make it another year without that. That's just something for you to keep in mind. Now, that's, that's our operational side of the house and I, I tried to be quick, but I really had to emphasize some of the important things there. This is the more painful part. But there's good news in my mind. So we're requesting three point nine million dollars in local funds, okay? But if you see the capital outlay is fifteen million dollars. We're getting the heck of an ROI here. And what I need or I hope for everyone to understand is this project list that we have here. Everything that you see UPC, we can just call a unique project code, is something that was approved by council. A contract and agreement was signed with VDOT. Money has been spent. And if we do not fund these projects, we will owe that money. If we do not fund these projects, we will lose our credit with VDOT. If we do not fund these projects, we will be operating purely off of general fund, except for our lane mile reimbursement. Which I'm sure this kind of thing could trigger an audit. These UPC projects need to be funded. If it's towards the bottom, these other projects are no less important. Hank's Pond, Heretic Avenue, Wagner Road. But it's all, it's not all terrible. We are working very hard at getting grant dollars for most, if not all of these projects. Six point two million dollars just went to McClellan two days ago. We're gonna make, we're making a request for six point two million dollars to fully fund Heretic Avenue and Wagner and Hill. Now, will we get it? I don't know, but we're gonna try and we stand a good chance. But we have to move forward like we need to fund these projects because we don't know. There is a detailed breakdown of each and every one of these projects throughout this handout with pictures, descriptions, anything you wanna know. You're always free to call my office, to call me, uh, and I'll answer any questions you may have. These are, uh, pretty comprehensive slides, give you a good idea of what's going on. And I also want you to know that none of these are pie in the sky wish list things. These are things that have already started. These are things that absolutely have to be done. If I gave you the capital improvement program that I would do in a normal situation, we probably, it'd be a lot different and a lot more expansive. Because really the city needs to be repaved. One last thing, um, per request, I'd just like to share, at the back of this handout, there's a tentative paving schedule.
Oh, bless your heart.
I just want you to understand how this works, okay? I'm gonna be very brief, but still, you need to understand how this works. These, these pavement preservation, the arterials, these are the ones really that VDOT takes a look at, a good hard look at. It gives us our scores to see if we're maintaining our roads properly with our funds, right? These are the ones that everybody in the city is on every day, right? These are your major thoroughfares. From City Point to Oaklawn Boulevard, these are prioritized one to whatever. And there's a combination of reasons that, that I've listed here, I'm not gonna get into, but paving, our paving program is fully dependent upon the amount of dollars that we have. We, there is no schedule. The schedule is set by what we determine we can do for the best return on investment at the time that we know what we have to spend. So, uh, but these are our priorities. This is in, in, and you'll notice the one point eight million dollars matches the one point eight million dollars I have on the five year stretch CIP that I gave you all. So that's, that's what this is. Now for secondary roads, which neighborhood roads where everybody lives. We'll go down here. There, we have two, two of those projects I was talking about earlier, the, with the UPCs, agreements with VDOT. We have the pavement, uh, pavement rehabilitation projects, okay? This is the first one. This thing was started in like twenty nineteen is when like the application was put in. We're very fortunate that VDOT hasn't just de-allocated the money and said, hey, you have to pay us back for our staff expenses. The idea with this is, with revenue share, that's why Austin and Johnny and all them used to like to do revenue shares. You have a lot of freedom, right? You can kinda do what you want. So if there's anything in here that has already been done, or you know, like water renewal, or somebody did something and we fixed it, we have the freedom to go to like the street next door, or spend that money somewhere else in that area. That was for a twenty twenty one cycle revenue share application. The next one, disregard the twenty seven, twenty eight, please. That is for anticipated revenue share funding, but revenue share doesn't really work that way. We have the money, they have the money, okay? They'll go when we wanna go. There's some overlap here with the Multry project. It, it doesn't matter, that's fine. We, we would take this money and we would just go further out. These are kinda in the center, the center of the city and we work our way out. And these were identified, uh, by Austin and Johnny and, and the, and them because this is, these things are in terrible, terrible condition. I mean, they're like some, they're the worst in the city. But aside from that, we have an agreement with VDOT, we have some funding in place. So these would be our priorities for secondary roads. Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Uh, Counselor, excuse me, Vice Mayor Gore and then Counselor Joyner.
You made a comment earlier about the doors, so you said that that's how it's set up, so is there, are these someone else's doors?
I'm sorry?
You made a comment when you're talking about the doors.
The trash doors.
Yeah.
Trash doors. Dumpsters.
So, very briefly, an agreement was made by a previous high up employee that we would put in, the city would pay for a dumpster enclosure for the downtown businesses. And the city maintained ownership of that area. So even though the downtown, the downtown businesses benefit from the dumpster enclosure, it still belongs to us and it's still ours to maintain. I, I end up having a camera put out there because we were having so much dumping from illegal dumping going on. It's been hit multiple times and we're still stuck with dealing with it. Now, what should have been done is the land, the area there could have been given, vacated by the city to anybody, I mean, I'm not blaming Hopewell Downtown Partnership, I'm just saying any, any, any group, that land owner there, Butterworth Loss, whoever. Here you go, now you get a place for a dumpster. Maybe we'll help you pay for your dumpster enclosure. You're responsible, it's your property. Well, that's not what happened. We spent a whole lot of money building this dumpster enclosure and we're spending a whole lot of money to keep it up.
Can you add that to circle back? This is, this is why we hear comments like, uh, we don't know who, who did, who made decision. Go talk to our attorney, self comments, just stuff like this. That we don't know about, that may clearly don't make sense.
Yeah.
So can we add that as a follow-up conversation about?
Absolutely, I, I have your answer, I'd rather not.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, but something can still be done just because that's what they did and it didn't probably was improper. Does it mean we can't fix it?
Gotcha. And when, and this, this can be, this can be fixed, but we still have to fix it.
Yeah, yeah, so.
But yes, it'll follow-up conversation, I can absolutely give you whatever you need on that.
So then my other two things is, um, uh, cemeteries, we've had prior conversations in regards to, um, expansion. I was doing the Gintas tonight, but can we also make a point after the budget cycle to have you come back to talk about what your current vision is for expansion because the council was involved in the land purchases and all those other seven and preliminary discussion, so that's a close session conversation, but we need to have your, um, concepts on that.
Not a problem, I have that information in my head.
And I have actually spoken to you, I don't believe so, so nice to meet you.
I spoke at your award meeting.
Did you? Cause you said that you didn't even know we had the freaking, um, at this tool to, uh, submit requests. And I was like, I said, he knew I, I'm the one who asked for council to do that, remember?
I'm the world's biggest proponent of seventy three one one now.
I forgot, I forgot, I forgot, cause I was like, he would know that. Okay, but anyways, the last thing is in terms of, um, contracts, this is city manager question, not really for you, but just know, cause it's gonna impact you. Uh, I'm putting a request in to see what are the biggest vendors that we, that the city pays annually? Cause I would like to know, one, do we have valid contracts with them? And two, have those contracts been, uh, bid it properly, renewed, et cetera, et cetera? And in particular, I'm interested about Public Works, I've been asked some questions about Public Works since before you got here. Now we got a new regime, we can get information.
Please let me just quickly speak to that. I've had conversations with Russ, again, these are things that I'm up to speed on. It's, there's nuance. I know that the, uh, general consensus thought, it's easy thought is, with, with vendors is that, um, there's economy of scale. There's other questions about whether or not things have expired. And then there's other things that, that everybody needs to be made aware of about how some things need to be, um, tailored to individual departments. But I get what you're saying and I, I would like to be a part of that conversation because I, again, have some answers.
Okay, so I'm definitely putting that ask in for like, for like a legit response soon for that. So I just wanna give you FYI so you can start brainstorming, cause I'm, there's several departments that have concerns and questions about in regards to how we're paying people.
Yes.
I even brought it today with council chambers, so.
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, uh, Counselor Joyner, Holloway, then Denton.
Yeah, I, I just had a, a question about Riverside Avenue.
I'm sorry.
Riverside Avenue.
Oh, Riverside Avenue, yes, I am.
It, it says, um, that this project has already received grant funding and is awaiting VDOT ACO. I don't know what that acronym is.
Well, I can tell you while I'm looking it up what the, the actual status of the project.
ACO is the, uh, VDOT Assurance of the Client's Office.
So, but that's not Riverside Avenue, so.
I'm looking here, I'm looking, it's right here on your paper.
Thank you, Marshall. Thank you.
Yeah.
I wanna make sure that, that we're speaking about the same thing and there's not a mistake on this.
Riverside Avenue is in my ward and this, I mean, obviously these people are very concerned because their property, you know, their, their yards are slipping away.
So if you look at page, I'm sorry, I had to interrupt, I didn't, I didn't mean to interrupt. If you look at page thirteen of the presentation, you'll see Riverside Avenue Rehab Thirty Percent Plans Preliminary Engineering.
Yeah, I've, I've pulled it out right here, I've got it here right in my hand.
So it says ARPA funds
Yes.
awaiting to be assigned on calls executed contract. Okay? So we've just executed our contracts with our five on-call consulted engineers. So we just need to assign this project to one of those five.
Okay.
And hopefully the hundred and two thousand dollars will get us the thirty two, thirty percent plans. At that, at that point, we'll figure out how many millions it's gonna cost.
Yeah, I know, because these people have been promised some things. I mean, they, there were meetings in, in a previous, you know, regime and, um, they, you know, they're just, they don't know what to expect, so I, I just wanted to, I can talk to you later about this, but, um, I just wanted to.
Yeah, the, the only holdup there is, is again, the money's in place on that one, the hundred and two, that's not gonna fund the project, that'll just.
No, I understand that.
The money's in place there, we had to wait till we had legal contracts with, with engineering.
Okay.
So, and we do now.
Alright.
So we just have to assign it. And we're gonna, we're gonna have that assigned probably within the next two weeks.
Okay, thank, and thank you, Marshall.
Uh, Counselor Holloway, then Denton.
I was circling about that, that trash can thing, cause, yeah, it just. It's interesting that, that, uh, to find out that, um, the city actually owns that. My aunt lived in Butterworth Apartments. And she's been there for some years when she was moving out. They were saying the management there is actually particular about the use of that trash can, we were putting stuff in there. And it's not, it doesn't even belong to the city.
Yeah, yeah, it, so Butterworth, their, their residents are, there's two dumpsters. There's two, there's, there's one enclosure with a separating divider wall. And they can use, they, one of them is theirs and one of them is for the downtown businesses. They've both been abused horrendously. I mean, I can't tell you how many times Mr. Beasley has had to take his guys and clean that up. And there's nobody for us to build, which is why, thank you to Charles Bennett and Chief Taylor for partnering with me to pay for additional camera to be put up in that. Because every day I have it on my computer, I'm looking, waiting for the person, to see the person drop something off so I can walk over to the courthouse. I'm serious. Dead serious. Jay, thank you Jay for your help.
How you gonna see that on the license plate?
He got facial recognition.
And it, it costs ten thousand dollars, but it had to be done. It had to be done. And the surveillance, unfortunately, because of the SIM card, it was just, it was nobody's fault, it's literally one of those parks things that we always talk about, supply chain issues. We, we had it installed, we're waiting on the SIM card and somebody hit it before we had the SIM card in it. So we didn't get to see who did that damage.
When you say, is somebody dumping loads and loads of trash?
Mattresses, dishwashers, whatever.
Sofas.
Sofas, refrigerators.
Refrigerators.
You can't see, you can't see, they have no camera.
There's nothing that I have access to, nothing that we have.
Can you put a sign up to say that?
Now, we did, we filed a police report. We do anytime there's damage like that, so, you know, but.
Can you print a sign to say your activity is now being marked?
I had those up before the camera was working.
Oh, okay.
I had those up before the, I had, so you're under surveillance before the camera was actually working.
Wow.
If you, if you look, there's signs, there's so many signs, it's, it's almost ridiculous. But, uh, yeah.
What's the dumping fine?
Call it too big there.
Can you add that to the list? What's the dumping fine? So we can.
Number nineteen.
You would get fined a million dollars.
Illegal dumping is a misdemeanor at least.
Yeah, we need to, I got you.
Need a real fine.
Yeah, you need a real fine.
I'd love to nail, I'd, oh, I'd love to nail somebody.
You would need those.
Well, we can do an ordinance, do we have an? She's gonna look it up.
Alright, uh, Counselor Denton?
Uh, just one question, are we, I guess, I don't know, that you are to our city manager. Are we gonna be discussing any further on the, um, the refuge budget?
He'll be coming, he'll be coming back.
Cause we're supposed to start a new service July first.
July one.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll definitely be discussing that again.
For trash collection.
Yes.
I, I just, this, the cost there, the service contract, I was curious as to what that entails, why that is so much higher, almost a half a million dollars. But I, I don't have to get that answer tonight, I just, I'd like to ask you.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a, I, I wish I could give you some kinda brief witty answer, it's a complex issue and we're just, there's also discussions on offsetting that cost, right? So, um, I think it's for a future meeting.
For a future work session.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, cause I'd heard somewhere that, that the city was gonna have to pay ten dollars for every total that they pick up.
I, I, I would, I, I, the informa, whatever information you have is most assuredly not the latest information and probably very, quite probably not accurate. So we, we, we can certainly, uh, at that meeting, we can certainly have, uh, we can show you everything, debt line item, just like a construction project cost. Uh, and, and how that's gonna move. So, yeah, but I, I for one, I'm looking forward to, um, to waste management coming in. If you look at the damage on that dumpster enclosure, I don't recall any news about a high-speed pursuit and it would take one heck of a sedan to do that. I'm, I'm fairly certain that our existing trash truck contractor did that damage. Okay? So I'm greatly looking forward to July first, as somebody from, who was in. Okay, so I'm greatly looking forward to July first, as somebody from, who was in colonial heights during the transition. And somebody who's here now during the transition, I can't wait.
Thank you.
Alright, uh councillor Powell?
Yes, uh, can you, what's the status of the Berry Street project?
I'm sorry, I'm legitimately hard here.
Oh, yeah, Berry Street project.
Berry Street, okay, uh, let's see here, I don't have that one on the top of my head, now that one, Marshall probably does. Go ahead.
Can you come to the mic?
Marshall, Marshall. Marshall, introduce yourself, they don't, you're fairly new and, okay, they haven't met you.
I'm the deputy director of stormwater and engineering, so.
What's your last name?
Heartless.
Okay.
Oh, and you're not heartless, you don't have to apologize for being excited, think it's a big incident.
So the Berry Street, uh, where we're at, we're in preliminary engineering with that one, so it's being designed right now.
Ms. Powell could be, she might be your best friend, seriously.
We've got two intersections there on Berry Street that are that are being designed.
When I was at, are you related to the heartless in Hopewell?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm one of a kind.
What, what, how? How did this come about, because I haven't seen any type of like accidents in years that, matter of fact, the last one I remember was probably early nineties.
This, this was one that that was previous to me playing here, I've just, I've taken it over and we've got a V dot agreement with it that's signed and executed.
It was when Jared Butler was here, but, I mean, it was accidents, but it was on High Street. And then your uncle.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, died there, so, uh. Had something to do with the walk, the walkable pedestrian uh apparatuses too.
One of our, one of our grant, grants in works is doing something with the Winston Churchill Corridor. So we'll see what comes of that, but that's, that's a big one.
And safe streets, what what's happening with our?
So that's a, that's a, that's a planning grant, okay, and what that is, is Wallace Montgomery was given that contract. And what that's going to give us is uh two things, it's going to give us a plan for uh for us to utilize for a, to 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 turn into a long-range transportation plan. Which is something that we should have always had and we don't. Um, that will jive or work with the comprehensive plan, right? And the other thing it's going to do is it's going to give us actionable projects with the information uh that we need to properly apply for the grants to pay for those projects. And that pro- uh the Safe Streets for All, that's underway. Um, you can see, it's, the total cost is two forty-six, that was a eighty-twenty. So uh, most of that is being paid for by the state.
But I was thinking about.
Or the feds, excuse me.
The way our streets are now paved, is that a part of safe streets too, right?
So Safe Streets for All, really, it it, um.
The biking lanes, do that have anything to do with that?
It it does have a, it has a heavy bike ped uh focus. Um, my main concern is intersections and pedestrian crossings. Um, uh, you know, I want to see high-vis pedestrian crossings everywhere, everywhere. Um, and so hopefully this will, this study will give us the data that we need to be able to to apply for the grants, to pay for the projects, to make those things happen, not on the city's dime.
Well, that's just a study. It's like you just ride around and determine that, why, I have a study for every day it goes big. Really, I'm serious, you know.
Alright, uh. Councillor Joyner?
I just have one quick question, if anybody's still watching, I know there are some people that are probably still, and I know I'm very concerned. What, what would be the status and where would you be looking at to, for the repaving of Broadway, West Broadway? And, you know, where?
If you look at the the bottom.
Was that at the bottom, I'm sorry that I missed it.
That's okay, no, it's 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 not an issue at all. Uh, if you, if you look, and this is, again, this is.
I know it's pie in the sky, I know we're not going to do it right now, but I do think it's out there.
West Broadway is a priority and it's a priority because it's in poor condition.
Yeah, and when they, where they, where they, you know, got rid of the lines, it's a, it's a, the road's a mess.
So City Point Road is our first priority because it's in the worst condition.
Right.
Um, but you see, West Broadway is next, and you see I have an asterisk by Seventh and Fifteenth. If you look beneath that, you'll see a highlighted line, I have a grant in for Sixth to Tenth.
Okay.
And the idea there is, uh, when we repave that, we're going to keep bike lanes, but they're going to go where they belong.
Yeah, exactly, alright, okay, that, that, I I don't want to prolong this, thank you so much, Mike, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright.
Okay.
Not seeing any other lights, thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
For the second time, if we could um finish up uh Parks and Rec, Water. And and that's it, uh, for the sheriff and the treasurer, if you guys can take time to to look through those, if you have any questions, you know, reach out to me. But I think we can handle the last two big departments, which are um Parks and Rec and then the Water Department.
We're going to make a motion.
And then at the end of the, at the end of this, if you guys can take the time to read your councillor request. I have a um a a write-up from um a request from councillor Joyner that I would like for you guys to read and and read, you know, reach out to me with questions.
Okay.
Why, why do we have a separate chief of victim witness if he comes under the courthouse with the new one?
And she says she's not, he says she's not active, but not now.
So is everyone okay with the recommendation from the city manager?
Mm-hmm.
What, what, we got to vote any? No, I'm just, just taking the consensus, if everyone's okay, we're just doing Parks and Rec and Water Renewal. And then we will review uh the other remaining three, and then the other two uh bottom ones we'll also review on our time.
Same with that, Mister Mayor.
Huh? Oh, wow, you didn't even feel it. Alright, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Madam Icebreaker, members of council. I'm going to make this quick because I know guys who might be behind me, but uh Recreation and Parks oversees sixth division within our department. Um, so you'll see some budget increases on several of these items, uh, but not all of them. We're going to jump to page five, as you can see, for operating budget, we're asking for an increase of ninety-two thousand. It may be different in your packet, I do apologize, it was a typo. Uh, what we're looking to do in events, temporary health services, we're asking for an increase of fifty-seven thousand. Uh, because there is going to be two fireworks show yet again in the same fiscal year. So the first show will be on June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, and the second show will be on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-six. The fireworks show costs us an estimate of about forty-two thousand with all the different vendors that we have to bring in to make that happen. Um, logistically speaking, there's a lot of moving parts, um, and it also covers a request for Doathon, which is about fifteen thousand of that request. For athletics, we are asking for twenty thousand dollars. We are still participating in Dixie, which will allow our kids, if they continue on, to go to a championship in which they could travel outside of the state. Uh, in years past, when they didn't get to that point, we had to go in front of city council, request money for lodging for those participants. And you were gracious enough to do that, I wanted to build it into the budget just in case. Uh, we have two great teams, our majors and minors, and we anticipate them going very far, so hopefully we could have a repeat. Um, regards to park repairs and maintenance supplies, we're asking for an increase of five thousand dollars. This is to cover the Riverwalk Phase One board replacement. Our goal is to start replacing those boards as they continue to fall apart, um, and replace them due to vandalism and so forth. Phase One, as you all remember, is approximately, was built in, what, uh, twenty nineteen off the top of my head? So it's almost time for us to begin preparing for that. And additional temporary health services for athletics, I would like to increase that to ten thousand dollars. This is to help offset some independent fitness coaches for fitness classes. The big request that I have for you all tonight um would be to increase our wages for our department. Uh, I have two options here, the first option being a hundred and fifty-three thousand and twenty dollars and seventy-one cents. This will help us bring up the wages of all of our part-time staff and address compression to be competitive with those outside agencies such as Wawa Sheets and Chick-fil-A. Unfortunately, my lowest-paid employee gets paid twelve dollars an hour. And obviously, atta- attracting talent to the city of Hopewell and retaining talent is very important to me, especially as we've transitioned over the past year and a half of having uh influx of vacant positions because we're not being able to pay them what they could get elsewhere, elsewhere, excuse me. The second option is to um ninety-six thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars, which will increase and attract talented employees. And that will bring the minimum wage up to, oh, sorry, excuse me, the wage up to thirteen fifty per hour. Again, that's still addressing the compression issue with the additional full-time staff as we move up part-time staff. For one-time capital, I'm requesting a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, twenty-two thousand of that will be for asset tracking software. Um, throughout the transition over the past two and a half years, we have found that there has been a lack of records. And in order to provide proper succession for the future, we want to make sure that there is a electronic copy of all of our assets, including AC units. When we go into operation with fleet management, when we put a new park in, just again, so we can help track and budget for future replacements. So we can track how much money and how much time is being spent at each park. The other request that we have is the Hopewell Community Center marquee, um, that's estimated about thirty-one thousand. It has gone out, we've had several contractors come out and take a look at it, it's not repairable, uh, the software is outdated, uh, so the entire unit would have to be replaced. And then, of course, the master plan um request is about seventy-five thousand, again, to make sure that we're in tune with our community. We want to make sure that we have an opportunity to go out in the community, get a master plan set that coincides with the city's strategic plan. Regards to capital projects, we have the Hopewell Community Center HVAC, um, that I know was questioned on on interim, Russ's presentation on last Thursday. There are ten units that operate our community centers. Uh, so each unit controls a little bit of that facility, it's thirty-eight thousand square feet, so it takes ten units to operate that. The majority of these funds are actually going towards our aquatic center. Um, that aquatic center has not have adequate air care, and I know it was something that councillor Holloway had asked me when he uh came on the board. And which we need to fix the issue, uh, because we've had some heat exhaustion from our current staff um in the summertime. And the summer is obviously very hot, if we don't have the proper ventilation in the aquatic center, that's going to continue on, where we're going to have to close the pool if the inside temperatures are higher than the outside temperatures, just for their safety. Um, that safety also eclipses into the actual building structure safety. So if we don't, if we don't fix this issue, it will become a structural issue. Mathis Field improvements, we have spread this out over the next four years, we need to improve each of our fields. And which we're going to level line them and cut the lip out from the infield to the outfield to prevent any balls from hopping up and popping a child in the face. It's a safety thing, um, it has not been done in several years, so we're looking to do that. Three and a half street park pavilion, oh, sorry, excuse me, Three and a Half Street revi- uh renovation is a hundred and twenty-five, this will be the phase two piece of it. We were very fortunate with the CDB G grant that was funded the actual playground structure. But there's still a lot of work that needs to be done at Three and a Half Street to make it a complete park and complete renovation. I know this question was brought up earlier, Mayor Parton, in regards to the Riverwalk in Phase Three. There is a quote for an estimate of one point four eighty million to help with that. That is a thirty-five percent um estimate at the time because it's still conceptual. So once we are able to get the funding through a grant to actually have the drawing plans laid out, we will be able to narrow that number down. But that is our current estimate as to what it would take to do Phase Three. We had personnel requests, um, the main thing I want to point out right now is the summer program staff, we need thirty thousand dollars. In years past, the past twenty-four years, John Randolph Foundation has been generous enough to fund our summer camp. However, with the competitive nature, um, and the amount of two hundred and forty thousand, five thousand over the past twenty-four years, they have not funded us this year. Um, so I am asking city council to fund part-time wages so that I can continue to offer summer camps for our youth at a very affordable rate. I'm also highlighting a recreation maintenance specialist position, that is one of our parks crew that helps us maintain our parks facilities. Um, since two thousand, we have added Crystal Light Park, Mathis, and the Riverwalk, and we have not added any additional staff. We have four people managing all two hundred and twenty-plus acres of parkland. That is the end of my presentation, do you have any questions?
Uh, Vice Mayor Gore, councillor Joyner, and then myself.
You, you were first. Okay, alright, yeah, I, I really wanted to speak to the pool. The pool is a huge concern and we're really missing a lot of wonderful opportunities for our youth. Um, for those of us that were able to attend the one-hundredth anniversary of the Rotary, um, speakers were there from RVA Swim. And if you're not familiar with that program, um, I hope you'll check into it. Um, I think the um, the head of our, the executive director of RVA Swim would like to present to our, our city council within the next few weeks. Uh, but it, you know, it's just, we're missing the opportunity to provide our youth with this. And I know, one of the things that we're doing right now is that you're, you're dur- during the um, during this intercession, you're doing lifeguard training, are you not?
Yes, ma'am, I appreciate you giving me that opportunity. We actually have a three-way partnership with the Hopewell City Public Schools, Swim RVA and our facility to host a two-week class. Um, we have had, um, out of the six uh youth that have participated throughout the past two weeks, we've had three that have applied to become lifeguards with our community center. So I believe that is a beautiful uh partnership and I hope to continue that on.
Absolutely, and it's just provides so many opportunities and, you know, there's opportunity, we, we don't have any local swim teams, we've got outside people coming in. We, you know, Hopewell needs to have its own swim teams, we need to provide our youth with these opportunities to compete and to compete regionally and so forth. And that's that, the, the investment in that pool is huge in terms of, um, you know, just even, um, uh, you know, workforce preparedness too. Because it, it affords them opportunities in that particular sphere. So, anyway, just wanted to put in the plug for that.
Absolutely.
And um, and I look forward to having the executive director of Swim RVA come and speak to us.
Excellent, and and I will tell you that uh they, they suffer the same thing, they're, they pay a little bit more than we do, unfortunately. Um, so they're able to get additional um lifeguards. As you know, lifeguard does come with a certification that they have to have before they get employed with us. Um, we maintain it once they're with us, however, not a lot of kids are in into it. Uh, it's almost, essentially has made that dying position, especially in this area. So the partnership with the schools and Swim RVA is very important to continue on. We want to offer these things, we want to get back to uh our own swimming lessons, we want to get back to our own water aerobics.
Right.
Unfortunately, I am not staff, I have two full-time lifeguards, once my supervisor is responsible for programming. And the other one who's has actually left and I still haven't been able to fill that full-time. So ours are operations are seriously.
And and a lot of the, a lot of pools are affected by this, this, um, you know, lack of lifeguards, that kind of thing. But this program can make a huge difference and and fill that void, so, um, and there are, there were some meetings today with the John Randolph Foundation with regard to um Swim RVA, so, uh, you know, so maybe some things will be happening, so, anyway.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Gore, and then myself.
Can we, when, when they come, I don't know what kind of information they're going to share, but I'd be interested to see how many kids from Hopewell are in that program.
That's what we want to do, we want to get the kids from Hopewell.
Yeah, but I want to see how many are in there now, because we've had this partnership for a number of years. How many kids are using it that are from Hopewell right now? And what does it cost to be in a program? And like, give us some more, besides like what they do, I want to see like what has been their Hopewell impact, since they've been using our center um and our pool. So just make sure when you talk to executive director, you ask them to make sure they drill down to Hopewell specific information as well. Because, I mean, that's important for us to think about as well, because if, let's say they have limited Hopewell participation, I get, I get the goal is to increase it, but should we look at investing in more into your department to have it be for?
Well, exactly, yeah.
You know, people, so I'd be interested to see that data. But in regards to um minimum wage, I, I used to follow this, but I stopped following it. Um, I forget which, is it, this next year is supposed to be fifteen dollars an hour anyways in Virginia, which year is?
So.
Oh, Lord.
So the answer to that, it is, it was anticipated to go up um January first of twenty twenty-five to thirteen fifty. My request is, as the number one option, was to go ahead and go to the fifteen-dollar option because it's only a dollar and some change.
You don't have to fight with me, because I, I believe in. You don't have to fight with me, because I, I believe in paying people, um, higher minimum wage. I'm here, I'm here for, I just want to make sure that we're not behind the curve with the ass. That's why I'm trying to make sure, because that actually needs to be a citywide conversation. As, because at one point, I know Public Works have people who are minimum wage. Um, I've always been team Public Works in terms of salary increases, um, because the work that they do is also hidden as well, right? So I want to make sure, citywide, are we going to be looking at that, having everyone hit that, that benchmark coming next year?
Yes, that's a goal.
But, I mean, by law, we have to do it.
No, not, not as of today.
The governor.
Sorry, um, just for transparency purposes. Um, the, the governor vetoed that bill, like, five minutes before we came down here. So we just found out about it. But we also just learned that Richmond.
We can strive to still do it.
Up to twenty dollars an hour.
Yeah, we can still strive to make sure we do the right thing.
I, I really think we should. We don't have, um, it's just really hard to recruit at twelve dollars an hour. It, I mean, there really is, and it's literally recreation. I think we have one person.
It's twelve, what, we pay twelve?
Twelve dollars. I, I support the fifteen dollars. I mean, if you can make that, I'm no disrespect, at fast food restaurants, I'm not sure we can make it here at a job that actually has people's lives that you're watching and water and stuff like that.
And I just want to point out to everyone, this is the reason why the compensation study is important. Um, it, it, you may not know that we have employees that receive social services.
Yeah, we know.
They work for the city and they receive benefits. And, and, and that's because we have not increased wages. Um, and we have not kept up with the trends over the years. Uh, and it's just not a good look to have a, a government employee receiving social services.
It just has to be done the right way, which is why my comment again is before anything is implemented, it needs to come back to council, because the last thing that we got was really, really biased. The last study that was then was not in the best interest of everyone, and it was really skewed. So we need to make sure this is done right, so that way situations like this don't happen again. That's why I'm a proponent of making sure we are aware, because ultimately it falls on our shoulders. And then we sit here and have conversations about police equity, and every time I turn around, we're giving police more money as if they're the only department in the city. Um, and this conversation about e- equity, et cetera, et cetera, and we're missing everybody else, right? And so, um, it's important that we really be aware of these conversations, because even administration might have interest in what they favor, and I'm not saying she does, but that's the part of making sure that we're being as neutral as possible, right? So going back to the point though, um, minimum wage is important, just want to make sure, that's a shame, but I think we should still do fifteen. But in terms of banquets, um, I know this has changed. I've talked to Reed Miller in the past, you know, when he was director, that people share with me that they have to pay for their own team's banquet, like the parent volunteers. And I think I talked to you about this, is, is there money or not money for banquets? Like, what is the wards and stuff? Like, what is the deal with that?
So we, there used to be in the past, uh, a general sports banquet at the end of each season. At some point, the department got away from that. Um, so essentially, it's left up to the individual coaches. If they hosted on any of our facilities, we take care, we obviously take care of the fees and all that good stuff, because it's part of our program. Um, we have not built that back into the budget. Um, that's, that's a request I can definitely look into and figure it out.
Can I make, I'm making a request to look at, please, City Manager, look at that, because these little kids, you know, and the parents are already volunteering their time to help make sure that there's these type of extra, extracurricular activities for the city, and I just think it's just for them to have to come out of pocket and pay for trophies and to host a banquet, I think is, should be something that we do. Um, especially, we're trying to drive traffic there to help you. I just, it doesn't make sense to me. So if you could look into that and give us a feedback in regards to, to that. And I also want to say, last year's budget, I think it was your first one, when you were in your position, kind of like interim, um, not trying to make you blush or anything, but you did a really good job today. You should be very proud of yourself. It's a really good, uh, presentation.
Thank you, thank you.
Actually, her presentation is the model for everyone else. We sent it around. It's like, we're using this one.
You did a really good job.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Um, I have a couple, uh, questions. Um, the first one is I just, well, it's not a question, it's just a comment. I just want to reiterate the importance that Counselor Joyner said about the pool. Um, I mean, it, it really is a wonderful asset to be able to have an indoor pool, and you can do so much recreational programming and making money off of it. And I think it's a crying shame that I have to go to Petersburg to the YMCA in order to do my swim training, when I would absolutely love to do it at the Hopewell Community Center.
And we would love to have you.
So, I mean, I, I, you know, whatever it takes, you know, in order to, you know, get it up and running, you know, with more lifeguards, you know, better hours. Because I know there's also a lot of senior citizens, um, that join me early in the morning that would love to be able to come here and stay in Hopewell and be able to utilize that service. Um, not to mention things like triathlons and other sport events, um, that we can use it for and, you know, make a ton of money off of. Um, the other thing is, uh, I know in here you, you mentioned, you know, the Riverwalk Phase Three, and, you know, I absolutely, you know, support it. It's probably my favorite capital improvement project, the one that I would love to see more than, um, probably anything else. Um, but I know that, you know, a, a, you know, one and a half million dollars to, you know, connect it from the existing, where it dead ends, to the marina, and then start taking it out west to Weston Manor, future Victoria Landing, um, developments, developmental, uh, site. Could you guys look at what it would cost to just complete it? To just get it to the marina? So that way, one, it's a full ease of access right through there. Um, and then it opens ourselves up for so much more recreational programming and events that we can, you know, generate more tourism dollars off of, but also the big public safety aspect. Um, and a friend of mine and I, we went walking, luckily, she's very young, um, and she tripped and fell almost at the very end of it. Now, I'm thinking to myself, okay, this was a senior citizen that had something like this happen. You know, we'd have to end up, you know, calling someone, and I think that's about point seven miles, you know, that they're going to have to, you know, take a stretcher or something, you know, down and then back, and you have a really long, uh, response time. Um, so you're just from a public safety aspect too. Uh, I would love to see what a cost would be for that and see what we can do to start working towards that.
Just to complete the whole thing and make notes.
So, so that's what, that's, that's, that is what our estimate is for.
I'm sorry?
That one point four, that is our estimate at this moment.
One point four?
Yes, sir. Based off of my conversations with Public Works.
Is that including going over the intake, or are we talking about trying?
You should get the stage.
I'm going to sound crass, I know, I'm sorry for this. We've been screwing around with that for what, twenty nineteen?
Too long.
Since, since twenty, at least twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen. It's still in the permitting phase. And then even if Virginia American Water gets their permit, which I think that they will, but that's going to be probably another year. Then you're going to have to go through design for another several years. I mean, can we not find a better way to go and connect it to finish it?
So that's what the project is going to do, is to look at alternatives as well, but the one point four is going to complete it from its current in-phase of two to the marina.
So, uh, Tabitha's acting as a project sponsor and the primary point for fun, uh, funding this project. Public Works will be administering it straight up. Um, we're, obviously, we're exploring right now, uh, uh, just getting the initial funding for the design. But with the water intakes, um, you know, they own to the high tide mark.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're at a point now where we're going to proceed, we've been, we've partnered with Folar. Folar is, is worked with Tabitha to get, to, to apply for a grant, uh, to get us started for a hundred thousand dollars. We're all of the same mindset. We're just moving forward. We're building it.
Okay, like I said, that's what I'm saying.
We're going to build it, and if they need to go tear it out, if they need to go tear it out and then replace it, then they can do that. But from all of our sources, Virginia American Water is just on permanent hold on this thing. Like, they don't know when they're going to do, what they're going to do.
That's what I'm saying. I wouldn't even worry about going over.
We're not.
That's what I'm saying. Just take it up and around. We can connect, we can, we can connect into Riverside Loop, you know, run some sidewalk down there, I mean.
We're, we're going to build it. We're going to build it whether we go over top of them, we go around them, no matter what. And that estimate she gave you includes doing that. That's getting to the marina.
One point five million dollars.
Yes. Now, we're at.
You know, if, if that's what it comes up, I will eat crow.
I'm confused by your face. Are you, you keep saying, is this a lot or a little bit? Why, what is your?
That's a ton. That's a lot of money.
Well, that's kind of what we spent for the first part.
For the first part? I mean, the second part, I mean, like.
It's like the average cost.
That's why.
How much, how much did you pay for the first?
One point five.
I mean.
For the first phase, I don't know.
One point five.
One point five.
So second phase was.
The linear feet, linear.
Foot, correct.
So we planned on, what, twelve hundred dollars a foot?
Mm-hmm.
Twelve hundred dollars a foot?
Because it's five hundred sixty-five.
And we got to build bridges.
And we have to. And it has to be contained as it goes over the tank.
And, and listen, if we need to, we'll do some volume engineering, or we'll get creative, or we'll get more money. But I'm not, we're not, I'm not going to sit on a project for a decade.
That's what I'm saying, I'm just, I know that one of the biggest holdups was going over that intake station. I'm telling you, just forget it. Just don't deal with them anymore.
Well, I, I got you, I totally, I'm picking up what you're saying.
Whatever it takes just to get it connected to Riverside Loop, that's all you got, that's all that I'm asking for.
I understand what you're saying, and it's my hope and intent to go straight over top of them.
And that's fine.
Whether they, whether they like it or not. But if we need to do, get creative, we will.
Okay.
Okay? Right?
I cannot let this project sit any longer.
Okay.
Artness and craft.
I'm, I'm going to take a, a measurement online. I'm going to see how many feet that is. I just, I just, I can't get over one point five million, but again, if I'm wrong, if I am wrong, I am the first to admit, I will eat crow right here publicly and say, y'all were right, I was wrong. Um. Stay with that. Um, yeah. Have you guys looked at also increasing, um, the fees down at the community center to help offset some of these costs? Like the fitness equipment?
Excellent question. Uh, prior to me taking this role, City Council had approved, uh, I believe it was in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, to lower the fees. Um, I am going to be doing a fee assessment on everything.
Okay.
Um, including a field rental, which is I have on y'all's agenda for April ninth, to increase some of that. But yes, I will be looking at some of the fees for the community center. Um, I hate to say that, because we've gotten such an influx of membership, and we're seeing a lot more, uh, patrons, uh, visit our center, and seeing them work out is a beautiful thing. And so I want to continue that, so I don't want to price them out like the previous fees were, but I do think they need to be increased slightly. Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, Counselor Pellum.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, how long has RVA been in Hopewell, you know, or ten years?
The, Swim RVA has been a part of the, the rec center for a very long time. They partner with us with the second grade Learn to Swim program.
And they do fourth graders instead of second, right?
Second graders.
They do still the second grade.
Yes, ma'am.
When I was going to share with her that they do every second grader in Hopewell. So you're talking about at least twenty kids per class per year. So it's been significant. And, and at the Rotary, uh, celebration, it was, I was amazed that a lot of people who didn't know culturally, while a lot of minorities didn't go learn to swim, and it was, it was evident if their parents had a bad incident, they wouldn't teach their children or allow them to go swimming or whatever, in my case in particular. So I never liked water, and so I don't swim today because of it. But anyway, it's been a significant number of children from Hopewell, and that's what they were looking at building on, is that interaction that they had with the second graders, but I thought it was fourth grade.
And, so their goal is to eventually not, it, for it to be in addition to, uh, other grades, because right now what happens is at second grade, they get their two weeks in the pool, and then that's all they have. So they will continue like to grow that program so that they're coming back maybe yearly or every couple of years to continue to build up on those skill sets.
They do come annually now, right?
They do, yes. So we have Hopewell starts off first, and then we also have Prince George, and Petersburg also comes as well.
Oh, they come, they come all the way down here?
Chester, Enon, correct. Yep, they come all the way over here.
Petersburg, and they have the YMCA.
So, sorry, Chester and Enon, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so they do come and utilize our pool for that activity as well.
Um, you know, Ms., you should know, you should probably remember this. On military installations, uh, you can't get into the pool without floaties until you pass a swim test. So since I was little, I had, you know, I took my little swim test, I could not have the floaties on. So, like, I am an avid swimmer, but not here, I go in like this. But I fully support it, so it's interesting when you say, I think part of the public awareness campaign probably needs to be a part of it, um, in regards to certain communities.
Yes, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you.
Last one.
Mayor Parton, while, while he's coming up, while he's coming up, I have two other notes. Um, Dr. Banker, the fire rates was mentioned. Can you make sure that that comes before council too, before there's adjustments there? Just like, uh, Ms. Martinez. And then also, I forgot to mention with the clerk's budget, we talked about it in the back, we talked about her duties. There was an award ceremony that we used to do for our volunteers. I didn't see that in your budget. Can you look, do a draft for, um, cost for that? Uh, and I can give you context later on, but just add it here.
And just straight to the point, Dicky. We, I promise you, we know what the wastewater plant does.
He said, "Good morning."
I was waiting for that moment. Alright.
Get used to it.
Thirty, yeah. Well, you said the bottom line, so I made some notes. I need money to keep sewer out of the streets, protect the James River in the Chesapeake Bay, and not go to jail for violating state and federal environmental regulations.
Uh, yes, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, um, Madam City Manager, City Attorney. Um, yes, you, you guys know exactly what we do, and I feel bad standing up here, because I was just up here a few weeks ago asking for six and a half million dollars.
Yeah.
Just to make it through this year.
You should feel bad.
Find that six million.
Couple of things I did want to highlight though, is that, you know, Hopewell Water Renewal is classified as a complex, major municipal wastewater treatment facility in the state of Virginia. Um, and I would like to highlight, I, I mentioned this last time, but in, in the report, I'll skip to the next slide. Um, we would like to maintain our goal of meeting our waste load allocations and having a hundred percent compliance for the last two and a half years with no violations. I, I really hang my hat on that. Uh, you can see in Fund Thirty-two, of course, I've got Facility Fund, and then I also have Sewer Funds. So in the Facility Fund, looking for a requested increase of about four point four million dollars. And you can see in the table there, I'm not going through line item by line item. We've got operations, we've got lab, we've got maintenance, overhead, administration, we've got a warehouse where we maintain parts and supplies in. So the majority of the increases that we are requesting are inflationary increases. Previous budgets have kind of remained flat. And this time, I was trying to present a more realistic budget of what our actual expenses will be next year. Uh, for example, in the maintenance, we're looking at aging equipment upkeep. We're also, um, evaluating, anytime there's a repair, we want to evaluate whether it's more cost-effective to repair the item or just purchase a new one, looking at long-term lifecycle costs with some of that stuff. Operations, a lot of expenses are going towards licensing and testing, because we have a fairly young staff now. We've lost a lot of operators that were Class One licensed, they're retired, or like, training them up and then moving on to somewhere else because of salaries, like we've heard several times tonight. Uh, but we do have a lot of operators that we are training and sending through the licensing program. Overhead, we've got a lot of contracts. I know, um, Councilmember Gore, you, you were mentioning contracts and, and wanting, we're looking into working with finance and, and getting more cooperative procurement agreements with contractors and vendors, so we can try to get the best price that we can get. So we're looking for a lot of cooperatives for services and contract work. Um, and then jumping over to Fund Forty-One with the sewer, we're looking at a, a requested increase of two point two million. Basically, there's, there's a lot of aging infrastructure underneath the roads, okay? So like I mentioned, we want to keep it out of the streets, we want to keep it flowing downhill and through the treatment plant into the river. So we're requesting some increases to help repair sewer lines throughout the city as a result of roots, broken, collapsed lines, and, and we'd like to repair some more of the sewer lines in the city by lining them or replacing them if needed. In the sewer maintenance, we're looking at some one-time capital expenses, which you can see on the next page. We're looking to purchase, um, new generators for pump stations. We have a couple of pump stations that we need to provide emergency backup power for. Uh, looking for a new jet truck. It's been in the shop quite a bit lately. So we're looking at, uh, either maintaining it with additional repairs or purchasing a new jet truck. And then one request is a new camera truck slash van, because we do have the equipment to inspect the sewer lines, but currently it's just mounted on the back of a pickup truck. So we're looking at maybe. So we're looking at maybe looking for a new van or maybe repurposing, and uh one of my past employers in Prince George County, we actually used an old ambulance and turned that into a camera van, uh so they could be out of the weather while they're inspecting the sewer lines. Um and then on the next slide, of course, capital, it's a big discussion at the wastewater treatment plant. There's a, there's a lot going on there. There's a list of thirteen projects here with a total of nine point two million. Uh that will expand. Our budget's kind of a little fluid right now, because we're looking at projects that are ongoing right now, moving them into next year's capital budget as well, because they haven't been completed yet. Um but I would like to add that we had a meeting this morning, a special commission meeting, where we went over the Dewberry Comprehensive Master Plan, and eight of the thirteen projects are highlighted in the Dewberry Study. So a lot of the capital improvement that we're looking to do was outlined in that plan from Dewberry. Um and then we have a meeting on April ninth with the TAC and the Commission for Budget Work Session to talk about the budget and the capital projects. And then the last slide, of course, is a description of the thirteen capital projects that we're requesting for water renewal. Is that to the point enough?
That was very good. Um I got Vice Mayor Gore, Councilor Joyner, and then myself.
The only question.
Oh, you didn't? Okay, I'm sorry.
The only question I had was the same one from when we first talked about this in the last council meeting. Council said that we wanted to get more information about the Dewberry Report, and uh and we had some economic development questions that we had to give answers to, so that way we can um decide if we wanted to support some of the products in the study. And so what I had asked last meeting was, are any of those funded in here? Because if so, it's premature, because council hasn't decided what we're gonna do. So are are some of those from the Dewberry Study in here? Because I think you can, I'm trying to make sure.
I think they're trying to estimate, but but today, they scheduled a budget meeting.
No, I'm saying for a hint, for your department request that you have before us.
Well, his request is operational. He, you know, that's outside of the.
That, but they were making these things related to the building, so that's what I'm asking. Is there anything from the Dewberry Study that's in your budget request?
Yes. Yeah, and and some of that stuff was even before the Dewberry Study was completed. Um some of them have been moved from one year to another. But yeah, some of the, some of the capital improvement are highlighted in the Dewberry Study.
So that goes back to what I'm saying. Didn't we, council give, say that we wanted to figure out what we wanted to do for Dewberry Study? In order to make that decision, we need to have some information from certain staff members, that way we can decide which studies we wanted to do or not do.
When, there's no study.
I'm sorry.
Now, when I say studies, I mean like, go ahead.
What I think I hear you saying is that some of the projects were already, they made it to the Dewberry Report, but they were already working on it.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we've actually got some quotes and some proposals on some of the projects already that were identified by Dewberry as well.
By Dewberry, so I'm saying.
No, no, we we identified them ahead of Dewberry.
Ahead of Dewberry.
Yes.
So everything that's in here is not new because of Dewberry.
No, no.
So this is your old stuff.
Yes.
So the new stuff is still getting that information for us to make a decision.
Yes, and there's some additional stuff in the Dewberry Study that we need to prioritize, whether we do it, you know, two years from now, five years from now.
Right, that's what, that's where we need to.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Alright, uh the one thing I just want to uh you just highlight and just make sure is that uh we definitely do the second gravity thickener uh rehab. And that's, you know, just because of the fact, the one that we've already approved funding for and that's underway, had a fifty-two week lead.
Mm-hmm.
And I think now, it's either like sixty, sixty-two weeks.
Yeah, we've actually got the, we've actually got a vocal coming back out, because they need to do some elevation measurements on the tank that's being repaired before they can do some fabrication. When they come to do those elevation measurements, we're going to get them to evaluate the other gravity thickener while they're here.
Okay. Yeah, because I know like you've preached to us and preached at commission meetings, we really need to improve our solids handling process.
Absolutely.
Better we can do that, the better we can lower nitrogen and phosphorus numbers and
Absolutely, yeah.
Not have to pay as much in credits and maybe even sell some.
Absolutely.
Alright, any other questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Alright, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, alright.
Thank you all.
Thank you.